I'd like to call to order the October meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education. I know Ann Ma will be absent today and currently Steve Roberts is not here. We anticipate him being here. I would like to welcome everybody who is here in attendance and those listening. We would like to make mention actually that this period of time you'll see a lot of posters around the room, those of you that are here. This is actually the 50th anniversary of the elected school board leadership. And if you, those of you that are here, if you get a chance, it's really kind of fun to go around the room and kind of take a look at the posters that talk, really even extended, certainly over the 50 years, but then over the most recent iteration of the State Board of Education is over the past 50 years. So we are going to have a special reception this afternoon. Everybody who's here, we certainly invite you to stay. That'll be at 3:30 and we look forward to having some special guests here this afternoon also. The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. At this time, I'd ask that we pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. And if you would now please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to take a look at the agenda. Before we do, we have a couple of changes to the consent agenda, board members. We are going to postpone item 12D until November. That is the process to initiate a contract bid for the Kansas Business Professionals of America State Advisor. So that will be a postponement until November. And then we have an addition of 12G and that is in your packet, I believe. Is that right Peggy? It's in your packet. So it's to act on an updated list of evidence and research-based reading programs. And this is for the purpose of state reimbursement. So that will be an addition. So we're postponing 12D. We are adding 12G. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'd take a motion to approve as suggested with those changes. Motion for Dina Horst, second. Janet Wa. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks like an eight zero to me. Thank you very much. We have two sets of minutes actually for September. First is the regular meeting minutes from September 10th and 11th. So those are in your information. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? And if not, I'd take a motion to approve the September 10th and 11 minutes. Motion to approve by Jean Clifford and a second by Jim Porter. All in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero. Okay, we also have minutes from the September 19th special meeting, which was a joint meeting between the State Board of Education and the Kansas Board of Regents. Again, that was on September 19th. So are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? And if not, I'd take a motion to approve the Board of Regents meetings with the State Board. Okay, Ben Jones, second. Jim McNeese. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, eight zero. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, we would like to welcome Bill Faflick from the Kansas State High School Activities Association. He is the executive director and it looks like you've got a few of your colleagues with you today, Bill. So you're here to give your annual report, so welcome. We're glad to have you here today. Thank you.
Well, thank you Commissioner Bush, members of the board, and Commissioner Watson. We're certainly pleased to be here. We thank especially all of those of you who have served on our boards and Janet, and we thank you for your service there. And currently, we have Dina Horst serving on our Board of Directors and our Executive Board and Mr. McNeese as a member of our Board of Directors. And of course, Ms. Bush has also been in that capacity. We're very excited to share with you some of the things that are happening at the Activities Association. And we always start with just what is important to us, same as you. What is our mission? Who we are as an association? And it is so critical to always keep that in focus. Every staff meeting, every board meeting, we do the exact same thing that you do. We talk about who we are. We're an association of member schools. 354 high schools, 408 middle schools. That's self-governing. We're established by state statute and our mission statement is not changing. It is to support our students. And I'll summarize our mission statement with simply building champions for life. Our goal at the Activities Association is to prepare kids to be successful now, to hold them accountable through the work that they have to do, the eligibility standards that they have to meet, so that they can represent their school. As they learn and as they participate, they learn many, many life lessons that will serve them well to be successful students, to be successful citizens as high schoolers and middle schoolers, as well as in their future endeavors in life. We know that kids that graduate after participating will go on to greater success as a result of those lessons that they have learned. As you're celebrating your 50th anniversary, we're also excited to celebrate a couple of anniversaries with you and to share those with you. One is we had 50 years of football. And you guys have a reception later that will have cake. We have a book that we prepared for you. I'm not so sure what the better deal is, but we'll have to judge that cake later on. But At Your Places is a book that was written by a number of journalists from across the state of Kansas coordinated by our staff that does celebrate 50 years of high school football. There's a story behind the picture on the cover and I hope that you'll take the time to learn what that story is. There's significance in the yard line. There's significance in the scoreboard. That is a one to zero actual final score of a football game. And you have to learn the story as to how a football game could end with a score of one to nothing. That is actual score of a ballgame and hopefully you'll have the opportunity to review that book. Great Kansas school communities rally around football games on Friday nights and certainly a great opportunity for us to celebrate that. Our governing body, the National Federation of High Schools, celebrated its centennial this past summer in Indianapolis, their national headquarters, with their 100th year anniversary. And we were pleased to have our staff and board take part in that celebration as we honored those that have gone before us. We certainly stand on the shoulders of giants with the work that we have the opportunity to do. And we're very grateful for that. As I talked about who we are, we are member schools. We are the member schools that come together in competition. They come together to regulate. They come together to support each other and know that each member school of our association is significantly important. We do have a staff that is incredibly busy and very active, not just across our state but nationally, and we'll recognize a couple of those momentarily. We have two legislative boards. We have a Board of Directors, which supports our handbook rules. And then we have an Executive Board that does our state championship governance and we appreciate the volunteer service of all of those. We also have an Appeals Board that does meet as needed. Met once this year and supported a decision of staff and will continue to have that appeals process in place. But bottom line, we're member schools and I think it's important that we keep hitting that. Our staff is truly incredible in terms of joining a team that is fabulous, active and known across the state for the activities that they govern, but they're also known nationally. Two of our staff members are chairs of national committees right now, almost unheard of. It's a long time to have one. We have two now. Fran Martin is in her second year as the chairman of the National Basketball Rules Writing Committee, which is the most powerful position if it's not, and she's not in it for power. She's in it to make sure that activity stays as pure and as education-based as it needs to be. And then Craig Montiefel has just started his four-year service as the chair of the National Federation Music Committee. So two national leaders in our organization. Several others serve on national committees. Jeremy Holliday, Rod Garman, you'll meet momentarily, is on the Swimming and Diving Rules Committee, and others have served as well as we go on. Mark Lenz is on football currently as well. But we always talk about students, just like you always do. And I've got three numbers across the top of your, 214,137 middle school and high school students, seven through 12 are in our schools right now. Out of that number, 113,196 have participated in an athletic activity, but we're more than just athletic activities. We are also 10 academic-based activities, Student Council, Scholars Bowl, KAY, Debate, Forensics, Music are activities that we govern as well. 291,228 students participated because that's our duplicated count, kids participating in more than one activity over this past school year. We are very proud that we get to work with kids and not often do we see them, but when we do, we are building students, build in face-to-face relationships with kids. We govern their activities. But we have Cheryl Gleason here to talk to us about some of the leadership development activities going on at the Activities Association. You might notice that both Rod, and I'll introduce Rod Garman as well, Rod and Cheryl are dressed in official attire today, not because we want to encourage you to yell at officials, Mr. McNeese, sorry. Okay. And they have no whistles, no red cards today, but this is National Activities Week and today is National Officials Day. So we do celebrate officials and this is one of our efforts to recruit officials. So Ms. Gleason?
Yes. And before I share, I would say that we'd ask our officials across the state to wear their shirt to work day. And you'll see that on the slide coming up because we want to try to encourage people to become officials because we certainly need them as well. We have a lot of great things going on at the High School Activities Association and of the 51 state associations, half, about half are activity associations. The others are just athletic associations. So we are unique and half of the states have what we have, but I think we go above and beyond where we're unique. In the state of Kansas, we do things that no other activities associations do. And that is we govern Student Council and we also govern a student leadership program called KAY, which is unique to our state. It's very, very exciting that we have been here before. I know Rod has and I have to talk to you about KAY and to talk to you about Student Council. But these organizations are special and we touch a lot of kids in our schools across the state of Kansas. Student Council just finished doing some workshops this fall. They are in their 74th year of having Student Council in schools in the state of Kansas. This summer, Rod led a staff for their workshop. It was their 56th year to have a workshop where over 400 students from across the state come to that workshop and really get empowered to go home and do great things and to motivate others to do what we know they're capable of as well. They had an outstanding speaker and the acronym, I have to look down and see what it was, that she used was fail. First attempt in learning. And everything that we do is our first attempt in learning. We all have failed at some point in time. I used to tell kids that we have all failed, but we've all persevered. The first time we took a step, we fell down, but we're not still laying there. We got up. We learned from that experience. So it's the same thing true in all the experiences that kids are learning by being involved in these organizations. So Student Council certainly touches a lot of students' lives. Another activity that we have that is unique to the state of Kansas that I am very fond of, obviously, and that's part of my job, but I grew up in this organization, is the KAY program, the Kansas Association for Youth. It is a character-building, leadership-training service organization for any boy or any girl in grade seven through 12. You simply need to be a student in the school to belong. And it's a great way to be empowered and it's a great way to learn an attitude for life, an attitude of leadership and service. Students in KAY know they can do things. They don't have to do anything. They get to do everything. And they get to have fun because they get to be with their friends. And we use the statement all the time that work made fun gets done. You don't have to be in this organization, but hopefully you're having fun and making a difference in the lives of other people. We are celebrating our 73rd year and in two years, we will be celebrating the 75th. We have a big time capsule we're going to open up and all sorts of plans to take place across the state to recognize the great things that KAY clubs have been doing through the years. We have an student officials advisory team and that SAT team met at our office last week and it's a group of students, two per classification, boy and girl, that are selected to come in. And they share with us their thoughts and perspectives on activities and policies and we use them as a sounding board. They're really quite unique and a very interesting and dynamic group of young people. When they were here last week, we did an activity and Jeremy Holliday works with Rod in that group. And basically, we had some care packages and we went to officials in town and surprised them at their place of employment and just walked in and thanked them for what they do. And got some of that on video and we're trying to use that this week to let people know that officials are all around us. And we certainly don't do it for the pay and we certainly don't do it for the compliments we receive in the stands. But we need officials because without them, it's just recess and we all know what that can be like sometimes. So the officials advisory committee does a great job and they meet twice a year. They're also the ones that do the PSAs. They went to WIBW and recorded PSAs and when you drive to ballgames, especially tournament time, you're going to hear these things. Or when you call our office, if you do get put on hold, you'll hear those recordings. And that is who those are coming from. The other thing I want to share before I move on about the KAY program, and I would be remiss if I didn't, this organization, as I said, is unique to our state. Well, two years ago, Blue Cross and Blue Shield approached me and the lady, Virginia Barnes, that's part of Blue Health Initiative, she said, "I've got a great idea and it looks like you've got a great group of students all over the state that might help me." She said, "We want to do something to empower students to come up with healthy lifestyles in their communities." And so through that effort and through $150,000 grant from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we had over 21 clubs that applied for grants. It was a great learning experience. We have, these clubs and this money have built walking tracks. They put in different kinds of seating, flex seating in some of our schools. Some of the schools have done things, Maxville High School things on their playground for the elementary students, anything that will promote a healthy lifestyle. And the thing that I'm excited to announce today is they have come back to us after that two-year program and said, "You know, we were so impressed with your kids and what they have done that we want to do it again." So they are giving us another $150,000 scholarship. And this one will be, or grant, this one will be about healthy lifestyle, but they're also going to incorporate nutrition and mental because the mental part is really something near and dear to the students as well. So just forgot to share that and I wanted to make sure I did. And lastly, I will share that this summer, we've had three student interns in our office. We've got a lot of things going on in our office and none of us are sitting around with nothing to do. But if you've ever been on our website, and Bill may mention this, we have a gallery of champions. And all of the state winners, all of our Hall of Fame inductees, all of this is in a gallery of champions on our website. And that information doesn't just get there, it has to be entered. And so these young people have been extremely helpful getting that information entered. They've done a variety of other tasks in our office that allow our staff to do the things that we're there doing. And again, as Bill would probably say, we're never bored. We always have something to do. So thank you for the opportunity to share those things.
I'm always so fortunate. I always get the great gigs. I get to talk about a few of the recognitions that we have going on at KSHSAA. So first, I want to, you obviously know, National Activities Week is being celebrated this week and today's focus is officials. Yesterday, we had a fine arts focus. Tomorrow, it's, as Cheryl was talking about, youth health awareness. We recognize coaches and sponsors on Thursday and then focus in on the fans and all the volunteers who make our events possible on Friday. And then wrap it up Saturday with community service awareness and projects going on. So we promote to our schools to, you know, help celebrate this week with us and get all kinds of great stories of how they're doing that and what's going on there. We also have an invite for you coming up this Friday to the football game between Lawrence Free State and Shawnee Mission East at Lawrence Free State High School. Lawrence Free State is our first ever Kansas Performing Arts School of Excellence Award winner. Last year, we had the national winner in Topeka Washburn Rule. And so we decided, why don't we make that an annual? Why don't we have a Kansas award each year to recognize the performing arts? So we're excited to present that to Lawrence Free State this Friday. So if you're out and about, want to go check, take in a football game, come on out to Lawrence Free State. We'd love to have you come, watch them be recognized as our state performing, performance school of excellence award winners. We also right now have nominations going on for our annual Spirit of Sport and Heart of the Arts awards. These awards I really love because they recognize going beyond the typical, you know, winning a state championship. These are things that are out of the ordinary, showing good sportsmanship, overcoming a major challenge. Last year, our Heart of the Arts Award winner was blind, except for some peripheral vision that she had. She was a state champion forensics person. She was the lead in their play. She was on the dance team. I mean, just this incredible young lady that overcame such a severe challenge. And we were very happy to have her as our Heart of the Arts Award winner last year. And then this year, last year, also our Spirit of Sport. Imagine you're at the regional cross-country meet and you got to get in the top however many right to qualify for state. We had two young ladies stop and help a other team's competitor when she fell down on the course and had a health emergency, gave up their possibility of qualifying for state to help this young lady out. I mean, just incredible stories. So those are two ways we recognize students as well. We are always excited to work with you, with KSDE, to work with USA Kansas, hosting the annual Governor's Scholars Award Program, recognizing the top 1% of our senior graduates. What a great recognition that is. Of course, we're always trying to recognize coaches and officials. And right now, I'm in the midst of our 2018 Coaches of the Year for Kansas, all 25 of them. I'm in the process working with them to get them further recognition as sectional or national award winners. The past two years, we've had two national coaches of the year from Kansas. Pretty incredible. Of course, officials and the time that they give into our activities, you know, we're always doing service recognitions, years of service, et cetera, recognizing those officials as well. And then finally, we had our 11th Kansan inducted into the National Hall of Fame this past summer in Jenny Hahnemichael from Baldwin. Very excited about that. And of course, we have our KESHA Hall of Fame as well, where we recognize individuals across the state for their service to our activities. And then, of course, not to mention, gosh, we host something every year and every activity called the State Championship, right? So we hope you can get out and enjoy those. And as Cheryl mentioned, our Gallery of Champions is quite the source of information if you ever go on to our website to check that out. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention from the student advisory team that we are so looking forward to you coming on April 1st to be a part of our meeting and we'll be in touch more about that, but that's no fooling. We'll see you April 1st and look forward to collaborating with you. So thanks for your time.
And yes, I'll talk about Gallery of Champions, but you may have to read about it because I'm afraid I'm going to run out of time. And we'll run through what has happened in the past year and then look ahead to what this next year is all about. We will always start with risk minimization. We always talk about how do we make sure we provide the very safest and best practices for, best practices for our schools to follow. We are adding girls wrestling as a championship sport this year. It will be the first year we've had girls versus girls in a championship format. Rule 13 scholarship was updated this year as well as our transfer rule. We instituted our summer moratorium this past summer, a mandatory break for our schools' coaches to be able to take vacations with their family, for schools to be shut down. We are going to host our first ever two-day state golf championships, joining the other 49 states in a similar manner, actually next week. And we had our first football jamboree. A couple of things that I think we'll hit on as we get started, as we roll through this, May 6, 2019. You may know where you were, but that was a really important day because it embodies what we preach to our schools. A very unfortunate incident occurred on May 6th of 2019 and a Latho West baseball player threw a pitch, middle of the ballgame, and went down in a heap on the pitcher's mound hard stopped. Thanks to the Latho, this is a Latho West athlete at Blue Valley Southwest High School having an emergency action plan in place, having an AED there, having folks trained, saved that young man's life. He's back in school. He's doing just fine. A little unsure of all of the things that precipitated that medical emergency, but suffice it to say, without an emergency action plan, there would have been a very different outcome potentially for that young man. Risk minimization this year is our very first year of having all coaches, head coaches and assistant coaches, sponsors and assistant sponsors trained with CPR and AED. That is now a requirement and we are very pleased to have that. Unrelated to the Latho West incident, it was certainly well timed in terms of that being passed 10 days before that young man went down. We address environmental issues. We are talking about concussion data regularly. We have our first year of concussion data reported and we'll share that with you momentarily. Mental health is a significant issue in our schools and needs to be continually defined in terms of our role and how we support our schools in addressing that health crisis. We have instituted a pre-activity timeout and cross-country host guidelines as we move forward this year. Our pre-activity timeout is pretty simple. You have a plan, you communicate that plan because it's not good if you're not sharing that. The administrators of events meet together, share the basics for that evening and that way they can execute a plan if an emergency comes out. Pretty simple exchange of communication prior to an activity taking place. We've already referenced the fact that CPR and AED training is a requirement this year. We're pleased to have that and our schools have responded very, very favorably to that requirement. As I mentioned, we are continuing to collect data. This is the beginning of year two of concussion collection data. This past year, we had a number of concussions occur at the high school level. You can see them ranked in order of incident occurrence on a relative basis and you would expect football to be towards the top. Probably surprised to many, girls soccer was our number two activity, a little bit higher than boys soccer. Our sports medicine folks and our staff will continue to evaluate this data. We'll have trend data. We'll be able to review that as we move forward so that Kansas policies can be based upon Kansas data, which is a really strong. And we are doing the same thing at the middle school level. So yes, we had a couple thousand kids, total, high school and middle school sustained concussions. The good thing is they're being identified. We're looking at not just when they occurred, how they occurred, but how long does it take for those students to return to learn and return to play? Those are two critical issues for us as we move forward and we'll continue to do that. We deal with the climate of Kansas and the changing weather all the time and a big initiative is a cold water immersion tank to get kids into cold water when their core body temperature is escalated. The old rule of EMS is to transport and then cool, and that's exactly the opposite of what our medical professionals are telling us. You cool that body before you transport. You'll see these things at cross-country meets, at football practices, at all of our outdoor activities as we get started in the fall. We even had them at the state track meet last year. And if you remember that, they were self-filling because we had about six inches of rain over the two days of the state track meet, which became the three days of the state track meet. So it was certainly not needed, but was there just in case it would have been. So cold water immersion tubs are there. Cross-country is one of those we picked as a focus because it is an activity where that line between being in distress and just simply being tired and fatigued is hard to discern. So we put some guidelines in place under the direction of our Sports Medicine Advisory Committee, have rolled those out to our member schools in an effort to make sure that that activity is following, those that host follow best practice. And a number of components to that and again, well received by our schools. We did modify Rule 13, which is our scholarship rule, the first change of that for many, many, many years. In an effort to get kids into the activity program, they need to start as eligible. And many kids starting their middle school career in seventh grade or ninth grade were ineligible and then never had the benefit because they never gained eligibility. This Board of Directors rule change allows an incoming ninth grader to be eligible regardless of their academic performance in the previous semester. Same with a seventh grader. Lot of discussion back and forth in terms of accountability there, but many schools go above and beyond our minimum and hold those kids accountable on a shorter-term basis. But on the longitudinal basis, this is a great move to get kids hooked in. And the success of this will not be measured by how many kids become eligible as freshmen. It's how many kids remain eligible after they have been given that one semester reprieve. As I mentioned, February 27th, I certainly hope that you're able to join us in Salina, Kansas for our first ever girls wrestling championship. Will be exciting to see about 300 kids, girls participate. Last year across the state, we anticipate double, if not triple that number this year in that first state championship. We also held our first football jamboree of Kansas, in Kansas history this past year. It's a kind of a preseason scrimmage between three or four schools. They came together, used officials, trained officials, provided an opportunity for some drills and game-like simulations against opponents other than their teammates and very, very, very well received by our school communities. Referenced our book already and the stories behind that and the moratorium, the summer moratorium is there. I think about the year ahead, we are out about around the state quite a bit. We actually have initiated a Listen, Learn League tour where we are going out to every league. There are 38 leagues in the state of Kansas who are meeting on their turf in their schools and talking to them in that and talking to them in that collaborative setting so we can hear that organic conversation and find out what are those hot topics and provide perspective on those issues as well as to share, really, the genesis for this was a concern over public-private. And we're really looking at what that public-private relationship needs to be in Kansas. If you're familiar with championships and percentages of public schools, championships won in private schools and their membership and championships won, there is a disparity. And we're looking at what is the best solution for Kansas in that regard. One vote came this past September to, that was not supported and I anticipate we'll continue to dialogue about that issue as we move forward this year. Certainly, sportsmanship is a huge issue for us. This, so far this year, we've had 195 ejections, a fact, a data point I'm not proud of. 12 of those are coaches. Should never happen in a high school activity. And where they are removed from a contest because of their, their sportsmanship, their behavior. So we're going to continue to look at that. We have some plans in place and some thoughts that we're taking out to our regional administrators as we go forward. We want those championship experience in our officials and our, our school communities to rally around those activities to make sure that we have those great experiences. This is the year, every four years, we do a loss of instructional time survey so we can come back to you next year and tell you how many minutes kids are actually out of school for our activities. And you'd be surprised at how small that number actually is when you think about the big scope of things. So we'll have that data for you next year. We also are in the second stage of a 1A split. It passed our Board of Directors and is now to vote to our member schools at the Class 1A level where they would split in the sports of scholar, in sports of volleyball and basketball as well as in Scholar's Bowl into a Division 1 and Division 2 for Class 1A. Education is always a core of what we do and certainly it's, it's there. So in terms of what we do through NFHS Learn, what we do through our administrative seminars, we hosted our first ever new administrator seminars in our office. And between the two meetings, had over 60 come as brand-new administrators to the activities program. So we're pleased to provide that full day of, of service training for professional development for those, those administrators. And I have exceeded my time, which I learned a very long time ago as a brand-new math teacher at Wichita Southeast High School. Wait until 30 seconds after the bell to ask if the parents had any questions when you're having your, your parent-teacher night. Well, I think I may have exceeded my 30-second even limit there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you've got tough questions, I've got Rod and Cheryl here to, to carry the heavy, the heavy load.
Thank you, Bill, and thanks to Cheryl and Rod also for coming and presenting. We always look forward to hearing from the Acacia group and finding out kind of what's going on. Board members, any questions? Randy has one.
Probably, Bill, an unfair question because, you know, I'm going to ask you a number. But when I'm out in Jean's territory or a little bit in the South Central in Jim's, six-man football comes up. And I just wondered what the trend is for the board to know and, you know, is that growing? Is that staying the same? It just seems to be a topic of conversation that, that people ask me about and I really don't know other than when I'm out and someone's playing six-man football.
We're going to refer to that as six-player football because we do have boys and girls that are participating in football. But six-player football is certainly an issue mostly in Western Kansas as schools, our enrollment is reducing. We see more and more schools considering six-player versus the eight-player that's allowed. Six-player is actually referenced in the National Federation High Schools Rulebook, so it is a truly allowable event. There will be 15 schools this next cycle of two years participating in six-player. As soon as we get to 24, we are prepared to embrace a championship for that six-player. I really see a shift in terms of what may happen in our smaller schools in regards to football. Currently, we have 1A football, but we also have two eight-player divisions as well. And so maybe one of those eventually becomes an eight-player, remains an eight-player and the other becomes a six-player. A lot of work to be done in the, in the interim, but I think we'll be ready for that next cycle. If we were at 24 this year, we were ready for that championship, but we think 15 is, is where we will be.
Questions, board members? Nope. Michelle, okay, Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations on the girls wrestling. That's exciting. My son is wrestler in eighth grade in the Blue Valley School District. And I was just curious, are they, are they only competing to get there, only competing against girls? Or are they getting, competing against boys and then eventually make it to state and going against? How's that, how does that work?
Certainly, great question. We have a rule in our handbook called the mixed-team rule that indicates that at the beginning of a season, you can have a mixed team or you can have separate teams, boys and girls teams. We're setting that rule aside for two years for the sport of wrestling only. So if girls go to an event and there isn't a girls' division, they can wrestle against boys during the first two years because we need to grow that activity. But if they go to an event, if they go to an invitational tournament and that invitational tournament contains a girls' division, it will be girls against girls.
Because right now, I think they have the option of not wrestling against a girl if they choose to do so, at least at the eighth-grade level in the camp thing that we're doing, it's about a four-week. It's only four weeks long and there's only about three wrestling meets and they're quick. And I believe that the boys have the option to choose if they don't want to wrestle or the girls as well. They don't have to choose.
At the middle school level, it will remain that mixed team, but at the high school level, our championship. If you're going to eventually, after the first two years of growth, if you're going to have a girls' team, those girls will only wrestle against girls.
That makes sense. One other question, the 500-mile rule for competing, that's been up in discussion especially for cross-country in the last, last year anyway. You can email me or whatever, just more discussion on how that rule came about and would it be able, be up for an appeal at any time or can they, has anyone even questioned it?
It, it comes up on a somewhat regular basis and, but very isolated basis. And the last time, it's been a, been several years since it has been brought to our member schools for consideration. So it may be time for that in the near future. That 500-mile rule came about. It usually, it was originally much less than that. Then the realization was if you go across Kansas, it's about 500 miles. So it's 500 miles from the border of Kansas to compete against or to bring a team in to participate in one of our activities. And our member schools have wanted to hold to that. The last time it was taken to our membership, they wanted to hold to that because of the disparity of those that might be able to travel and those that would never be able to travel. And it becomes an equity, equity issue for, for some of our member schools and an opportunity issue. Almost the, those that have would be able to do a little bit more and have a little bit more advantages as opposed to those that might not. So I think that will be something we continue to monitor. No, there have been no recent proposals to, to do that. We get an isolated case, well, we'd really like our basketball team to go here. We'd really like our cross-country team to go there. But those are, those are singletons and not, not a groundswell of support.
Board members, my hand waving, some, some are working and some are not. So I guess we'll go back to literally your hand. So Jim, you can ace.
Thank you for your report. I imagine for 50 years, you've been giving a report to the activities regarding the Activity Association to the State Board. We have a long history together. And one of the things I'd like to reaffirm at this time is that the Activity Association isn't here just for championships. You know, you do have a vision, you know, champions, but you're talking about students. You know, that the Activity Association, just like the officials, they're there for safety. You know, primarily, almost all the things that you told us about today go right back to student safety. And that's one of the most important things that, that you do. And I appreciate what you've done and the relationship going back to, my first one was Bryce Durbin, oh man, Nelson. And, and they created a great foundation for who we are today. The Activity Association sometimes gets kind of a bad rap because they don't move real fast, you know? And they shouldn't. You know, it's not a whim, it's not a fancy, it's not just to meet the needs of one school, but it's designed to meet the needs of all the students from Class 6A to Class 1A. You know, and that's a real challenge because we have such a diverse state, you know? So I want to thank you for your report today, but also for your focus on safety and what it takes to keep our kids safe in those activities. Yeah, we want them all to be champions, we want them to be safe first. So thank you for what you do and, and keep the good work up. Thank you.
Dana?
Thank you. Well, as a member of the Executive Board, it's really been eye-opening. And actually, the Board of Directors was eye-opening as well. But as a parent and a grandparent, sometimes we don't understand why those rules exist. And this being on that decision-making component helps me see why those rules exist. And I'd also like to share or just say to my fellow board members that if you do have questions or concerns, that Jim and I are your representatives and we'd be very happy to share your concerns with, with our colleagues on the board, on whether it's the Executive Board or the Board of Directors. So thank you for allowing me the, the opportunity to serve and to both my board colleagues. And also, I can tell you that the staff is incredible. And we're very lucky in Kansas to have such dedicated individuals working for us and actually for our students. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions down here? Jean?
I just had a quick comment. I wanted to thank you for your work on, on ensuring that our students are, are safe and, and remain healthy, especially regarding concussion. I think that the statistics on that are pretty alarming, but I like that, you know, there are some safeguards for students and, and hope that they include not only delayed return to, to their activity or their athletic sport, but also involve with their academics so that they can really have brain rest. I also like that you have these cold tubs for cold immersion for heat stroke for students who are experiencing that. I think that that really says a lot that we're taking student safety very seriously and, and we want our students to first of all, be safe in our schools. So thank you very much for those initiatives.
Any other questions, board members? I think maybe my speaking order app is working now, so we'll see. Okay, well, thanks again to Bill and Cheryl and Rod. We appreciate you coming and giving your annual report, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Rod, Julie.
Okay, at this time, I now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education Meeting open at 10:43. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks speakers, that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent if applicable. The State Board also asks that each speaker focus remarks, their remarks on issues and topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes and any board questions will be for clarification. Our first speaker will be Janet Trammell and then after that will be Shannon Crissell. So Janet, welcome, glad to have you here.
Thank you, I'm Janet Stramel. Thank you. I'm, I'm an associate professor at Fort H State University, but I'm here today to represent the Kansas Association of Teachers of Mathematics. I'm the president this year of that organization. We have a new mission statement and I want to read that to you. KATM fosters an engaged community to advance effective practices in teaching and learning mathematics throughout Kansas. And we've recently become aware of some discussions around, around changing the state assessments, particularly around maybe the, using the ACT as a state assessment. So I have a letter from the Kansas Association of Teachers of Mathematics Board that I'd like to read to you. "We, the undersigned board members of the Kansas Association of Teachers of Mathematics, hold firm positions on certain values in the arenas of education and learning. One position we positively affirm regards the state's current mathematics standards, the 2017 Kansas mathematics standards. These standards represent understanding of top-tier quality and provide a solid and comprehensive framework for the development of mathematical literacy. Deviation from these standards now or in the future would need careful review and extreme consideration. We respect the role of the state of Kansas and the Kansas Board of Education as a leader in helping shape a quality educational landscape for the many students in its care. The state chooses to monitor and measure the effectiveness of student learning and growth in its own way and in its own purposes. We submit that these standards should retain their due respect as the premier guiding instrument for both mathematics education and assessment throughout the state. KATM supports standards over assessments. Regardless of the direction that you, the State Board of Education, chooses regarding mathematics assessments, we recognize the need to have a strong adherence to and implementation of the current mathematics standards. We place trust in the State Board of Education as you, like us, continue to endeavor for the best interests of our students." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janet. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Shannon Crissell and then it will be Ashley Jack.
Good morning, thank you all very much. I'm Shannon Crissell, I'm from Wichita Public Schools. I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. I want to take credit for Bill Faflick too. He is a product of Wichita Public Schools and, and we share our talents around the state. I also am here to kind of thank the board because I want to thank you for allowing some pilot programs to move forward in our state. And I want to tell you about why that's been important to Wichita Public Schools. I think it's really important for us to continue to be creative and innovative, especially in light of the critical teacher shortage. What I can tell you today, and Jenna Genest will get up here after Ashley, and she'll tell you how the alternative licensure programs, especially the TAP program and the SPED pilot program have really kept us in business in Wichita. If we had not been able to hire 118 of these positions this last year, I'm not sure we'd be in business. Our school would look a lot different than it does right now. One of the things I want to talk to you about just briefly is there's kind of a myth out there that some of these alternative licensure programs, they're just not as rigorous and they're not as good. But I would beg to differ with that. And I will tell you that because of my human resource background and all my research on best practices, is that what we need to follow in career development is what's called the 70-20-10 rule. 10% of growth and development in a career is educational, formal classwork because it's foundational. 20% is with a mentor or a coach. And 70%, the rigorous part, is on-the-job application. So when you look at the paraeducators who get into these restricted license programs, they have been in the classroom. So 70% of their learning is on the job. And they have been watching experienced teachers. And they also supervise the classrooms and actually take over the classroom in the teacher's absence. You know about the Teacher Vacancy Committee and we've had a couple representatives on that. Dawn Dome served for years and now we have Karen Pickert. Dawn and Karen also go to all the states in the Midwest. They used to go to 17 states, now they go to seven because there's no point in trying to recruit. to recruit from Nevada anymore because they've got a critical shortage as well. But they can tell you that this shortage is here and that we continue to need the alternative education programs. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jack.
Thank you. Ashley Jack's next and then Jenna.
Gina. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity. I'm Ashley Jack. I am the Assistant Dean at Wichita State University. And at Wichita State, we know the field of teaching is one of our country's most important professions. And with the alternative licensure pathways that came from the Teacher Vacancy Committee, as well as some work that we were doing at the same time, we have responded to that with high-quality rigorous programs. One of those that I want to talk to you about today is the TAP program. This launched in fall of 2017 at Wichita State. It is a bachelor's in early childhood unified and elementary education. The focus of this innovative program is to prepare paraeducators for licensure in early childhood unified or elementary education. What we've done is we have inverted the curriculum to promote paraeducator's success in the classroom through an inverted approach of looking at that initial coursework that they need to work on critical teaching skills necessary to transition them from a paraeducator to a classroom teacher. We offer this 100% online, but in addition to that, we provide them with a TAP success coach who mentors them. These TAP success coaches are building administrators, district administrators, and master teachers in the classroom throughout Kansas. Our focus is to help these paraeducators to transition into the room with their 1,900 clinical hours of experience in the classroom while in the program. That's based on four academic semesters that they are getting that clinical experience while learning about what it takes to be an effective teacher. One of the key pieces that we did in this is looked at creating a license. And we have a limited TAP license that was approved that we utilize. This requires the candidate to be teaching at effective or higher on the KSDE keep evaluation tool before we ever let a district say, "We want to hire this individual." And then they can be hired on this restricted license as they complete the program and so they serve as the teacher of record in that classroom. So, it's high-quality, it's rigorous, it's focused on making an impact. What we can say is not only have we been able to bring the university to communities and to individuals who would not be able to finish their degree without this opportunity, but we're also making an impact on K-12 student achievement as well as P-12 preschool. We currently have 128 candidates serving as teacher of record in a Kansas classroom. 127 of those are in the limited TAP license and one of those is on the elementary ed pilot license. We currently, as of tomorrow, with the second eight weeks of the fall semester beginning, will have 589 candidates throughout the state of Kansas in this program. And so, we are focused on making a difference in the classroom and making sure that there is a well-prepared teacher ready to take over in that classroom. So, that's our focus.
Thank you very much.
And the handout?
Yeah, we did get a handout. Thank you. Okay, Gina.
Good morning. As Shannon mentioned, I'm Jenna Genest. I'm the Manager of Staffing and Recruitment for Wichita Public Schools and I'm here also to speak about the alternative programs. So, I don't know if all of you have kept up with the news, but Wichita Public Schools has just wrapped up with a phenomenal hiring season. Fortunately, we were able to fill nearly all of our positions with only 31 vacant at the beginning of the school year. That's tremendous and the best hiring season that we've had in the last five years. Much of this success was largely attributable to two things. One is the ability to hire early and recruit early. And the second is through the use of our alternative licensure programs such as Dr. Ashley Jack's TAP program. To give you an idea of how many vacancies have been filled through the last two years, I've broken down our hiring over the last two years. These programs have enabled us to be able to fill 132 classrooms with teachers which would have otherwise gone unfilled or been filled with a substitute. This represents almost 15 to 20% of our hiring over the last two years. For this year alone, we've hired 49 alternative program teachers just this semester. Next semester, we have not started hiring yet, but we anticipate that will grow. Last year, they represented 83 of our entire new teacher population. This year, we're seeing a desperate need in the hard-to-fill area of science. Unfortunately, of the 30 vacant positions at the beginning of the school year, seven were science vacancies. Unfortunately, at this time, we have noticed a reduction of about 50% of our student-teacher population in our classrooms this semester. Over the last two years, we've had between 100 and 125 student teachers that we are able to recruit and hire on to Wichita Public Schools. This year, we're at 64. That's astounding. That speaks to the teacher shortage across the nation and in Kansas. There are three of the 64 that are science teachers. If we hired all three of those teachers, it would still not fill the void that we have for science teachers this next semester, which leads us to believe we are in desperate need of a new alternative pathway for science teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Adalia Sherman and then Stacy Bell.
Hello, I'm Adalia Sherman with Canier. I'm here today representing our Educators Rising Kansas program. We have a program that's spanned over the past four years, around 40 programs throughout the state, not nearly enough. But through this process, we have continued to be able to provide students opportunities to explore a career in education. And they're doing that through understanding the profession, learning about students, building content knowledge, engaging in responsive planning, implementing instruction, using assessment and data, and engaging in a reflective practice. To do this, the educators, the teacher leaders in the programs provide this curriculum throughout the year. We then provide students opportunities to attend two regional conferences, one state conference, and then if they choose, they can also attend our national conference. This year, our two regional conferences, one will be at MNU, that will be November 6th. The competitions they'll be participating are Exploring Careers, Lesson Plan Teaching, TED Talks, Conference Literature, impromptu speaking, interviewing, and more. And on our website, we have all this information, but I'm going to send you an invitation. Our second regional conference will also be in Wichita, November 13th. And the day starts about 8:30 in the morning because we are busing students in and then we have them rally and gather about 2:15-ish to depart by 2:30 so they can get back to their schools. And our state conference this year will be on February 10th at Emporia State University. This will be the second time that they've hosted our conference. We have about 250 students that have attended our past three state conferences. We're hoping this year that we can surpass that to 300. Our national conference will be in Washington, D.C. this year on June 17th and 21st of 2020. Thank you.
Thanks, Adalia. And we continue to encourage folks to establish educator-rising programs in their high schools. Some of them have middle schools, don't they?
Yes, we do. And we also have in the rural districts, they can run as a club if they don't have enough students enrolled to actually have a class schedule.
Yeah, and so we encourage, because it's kind of as a grow-your-own program is what it is.
Absolutely.
So, we continue to encourage folks to do that. So, we appreciate your work in this also.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Stacy, Stacy Bell. And then we have Bev. I'll be butcher that last name. Sorry. Okay, Stacy, thank you.
Hi, I am Stacy Bell. I am a Secondary Curriculum Director at Shawnee Heights. I've had the pleasure to shake hands with several of you as I work very diligently on the Kansas Teacher of the Year Region Two Banquet Committee where we celebrate educators in the state of Kansas. I have to tell you that the first time I met Dr. Watson at that event, he shook my hand and said, "Do you have one of these?" And I brought it today for you. He said, "Let me tell you about a vision I have for Kansas." And then we purposely had a speaker that talked about that vision in Kansas where all kids could be successful. Our high school football team, our football field just got a brand-new turf and our transportation or buildings and grounds person got on that football field and noticed that there was no survey markers anywhere. So, he went up to the foreman and said, "How is that kid on that combine digging the ground?" And he said, "You know what? There is a satellite antenna on this $300,000 track machine that is controlling all of his moves. That's how I can put a 21-year-old kid in here. He can never dig too deep. It will curl the bucket. Within a few years, there will be no person in that machine. It will run on its own." We have a tremendous responsibility to educate Kansan kids so that they, A, have morals, that they know right from wrong, and they have the ability to be creative, critical thinking, and problem solvers. We have to make sure that these students can tackle problems for positions we don't even know exist. So, when I heard that the ACT was being considered as the high school state assessment, I had to think about all these educators I've heard over the last eight years talk about their accomplishments at the Kansas Teacher of the Year. And none of them are talking about their ACT scores of their students. They're talking about problem solvers. They're talking about how they are creative and critical thinking opportunities for their kids. I'm very worried that if we track down that require our ACT to be an accreditation for our schools, that that's what our educators will focus on and not be the problem solvers that we need so that tractors and semis running down highways on their own, that they're not prepared to work in that environment. 50% of the ACT content in mathematics is taught in the middle school. I'm worried that our middle school students will become a test prep ground. I'm worried that we won't be focusing on project-based learning and thinking outside of the box because we want to make sure they have a successful experience in high school on an ACT. I get it about the windows that opens for every kid. I totally understand that and I am a big proponent of giving every kid an opportunity. I love the career pathways. I'm fighting for that in our district, but I think this is a conflict. I trust you, Dr. Watson, to lead us in this board, to lead us in the right direction, but I really want you to think about some unintended consequences that decision might have. So, I appreciate all of you and all of your work in supporting educators in Kansas. Just think about our students and what are we really preparing them for? If we are required to give an ACT or some state assessment for some federal mandate and it is just, "We've done it," then that is fine. But if we're going to hold that as an accreditation model and hold schools accountable, we're forcing districts to play a game. We're forcing districts to chase a score and not prevent or provide our kids opportunities to be successful. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Stacy. And I can assure you, I think I'll speak for the board, that we would never allow, whether it's ACT or regular state assessment, to come in the way of standards. I think I probably speak for the board on that. We'll continue that focus with standards.
Thank you, Brett. I appreciate that in the most respectful way.
Absolutely. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Okay, Bev, is this Slaughter?
Schotler. The C is silent.
Schotler. Okay. And I guess I maybe need some help with my phonics, huh?
Well, it's better than my maiden name, B-E-O-U-G-H-E-R.
Oh, boy.
Booker. So, it's better than that one.
Okay, well, Bev, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm here to represent Kansas Independent Colleges Association, which is 20 independent colleges in Kansas. And I'm also representing CAPCO, which is Kansas Association of Private Colleges of Teacher Education. Just a quick blurb about me before we start. I'm a fifth-generation teacher. I've taught elementary, middle school, and high school in both general education and special education. I'm now teaching at the higher education level. The document that I just passed around, you received my email earlier, so I just want to highlight just a couple of points from CAPCO. The first point that I just want to highlight is that we are totally supporting universal design for learning, which from my special education background is very important. We're also supporting the standards review, but would like to take it one step further and say that if we are going to have standards for struggling readers, including dyslexia, that we are going to have to redo a bunch of standards that were just passed, including high instance, special education, English Language Arts, and early childhood unified, all of those that are mentioned in the Dyslexia Task Force. One other thing that I'd like to point out is that looking, we did a survey through CAPCO and it looked like that each of the colleges felt that it would take 7,000 to 20,000 to implement this program at their campus. I'd like to point out that independent colleges in Kansas do not receive any direct institutional funds from the state of Kansas or from county or local property taxes. Our money comes from students and from grants from outside agencies. So, we receive no funding from Kansas. So, this would be a financial, this would be something that we would have to take on financially. Another item that I'd like to point out is the test that we're asking kids to take in addition. For the test, an additional licensure exam, students right now spend about $530. This would add an additional 200 or so amount. And this is within the teacher shortage areas of elementary education and special education that would be taking this on. We already have a shortage area there. In conclusion, I'd just like to say that CAPCO and the independent colleges do want to work with the Dyslexia Task Force in making sure that we are serving the needs of all struggling readers in Kansas.
Thank you, Brett. Bev, appreciate you being here and I hope you're able to stay this afternoon when we have our dyslexia recommendations presented. Great, great. We'll be glad to have you. Thank you. Just another little note, board members, in your packet, you do have two separate letters that were submitted as written public comment. Both of these are on the topic of special education. One is from Representative Blake Carpenter. The other one is from a social worker from the Derby School District by the name of Leah Grimm. And they are asking about a potential name change of a special education area. And I am going to refer this topic to SEAC, the Special Education Advisory Council, and Jim McNeese is our representative on that council, and ask SEAC to take this up and bring, and I believe they have a meeting in November, is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to refer this to SEAC and ask Jim to take that there and that they will bring back a recommendation to us regarding this information. So, please refer to those letters in your packet. At this time, I'm going to declare the State Board Citizen Open Forum closed at 11:09. We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board and the State Board will determine if any of these issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. State Board members, we're going to take a quick break. If you could be back in 10 minutes or less and then we will go to our Seal of Bileiteracy presentation. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Okay, board members, if we could return to the table, please. Yep. Okay, we're pleased to have Regina Pizat. You're going to be sharing with us some information about the Kansas Seal of Bileiteracy. So, appreciate you being here today. We look forward to hearing the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner. Mrs. Allen, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but just a bit.
There we go. My voice is not very strong. It's always a problem. My students always told me, "She doesn't speak loud enough." So good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Watson, and members of the Board of Education. I'm here today to give you some updates on the Seal of Bileiteracy initiative and to tell you about the progress that we've made in the last three years of this program. Julie Ewing and Nicole Prim, the ESOL consultants, also support this initiative, and they were not able to be here today, but they are great supporters of the Seal of Bileiteracy. So I just wanted to start with a review, an overview of what the Seal of Bileiteracy is for our new members of the board. The Seal of Bileiteracy certifies that a graduating senior has achieved a certain level of proficiency in English and another world language, whether the student has learned the language in school, at home, or through some other life experience. Students also receive a certificate of recognition, and ideally, they receive these certificates at graduation award ceremonies or spring award ceremonies. And these are two certificates that were awarded last spring. Just a few reminders about what the Seal of Bileiteracy is and is not. It is recorded on a student's high school transcript. It's a permanent record there. And there's no actual seal affixed to the diploma, just as no other kind of things are allowed to be affixed to our high school diplomas in Kansas. And the Seal of Bileiteracy is based on proficiency, not on the number of courses a student has taken. In May, the Advisory Council met and made some necessary changes to the guidelines. The advisory council voted to change the qualifying scores on the ACT exam for proof of proficiency in English to align more with what the majority of other states are requiring and what the global Seal of Bileiteracy requires. So we want to be doing something similar so that there's parity in what we're doing. This makes the required proficiency levels in both languages more closely aligned, whereas before, the English requirement was higher. The Advisory Council also approved assessments, which will add a lot more languages in which students can be certified. And we also created an alternative assessment protocol for those types of languages that don't have formal assessments yet. And we're changing the names of the certificates from gold and platinum to silver and gold. That just seems to make more sense. There are no platinum Olympic medals. And when people talk about the gold standard, it's because the gold is the best. So it just seems more logical. So Kansas is a little bit unique. We have two proficiency level awards. The first one is the silver, the intermediate-mid proficiency. And students must have intermediate-mid in at least one of the two languages. They might have a higher proficiency level in the second language, but at least one has to be intermediate-mid. And our second award is advanced-low. And so students must have advanced-low or higher in both languages. This chart, I apologize, breaks all the rules for PowerPoint presentations, so don't worry about deciphering what's going on here. I've simplified it in my next slide, but I wanted to show it because it's from the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages and what they propose as reasonable guidelines for how long it takes to learn a language. The U.S. Department of State Foreign Service Institute also puts out similar information about how many hours it takes to become proficient in a language. So second language acquisition, there are a lot of myths about it, but there are no shortcuts to learning a language. It takes time and sustained effort to achieve each new level of proficiency. As you know, there are apps out there that advertise that you can learn a language and start speaking right away. And there's this impression that computer programs are a viable way of teaching another language. And so ACTFAL and the U.S. Department of State would disagree with those. If the teacher's providing instruction in the target language, 90% of the time in the target language, and if the student is motivated and engaged, a student can reasonably expect to achieve in two years novice-high proficiency. This is not the Seal of Bileiteracy after two years. After four years, they can expect to achieve intermediate-mid proficiency. Again, if the teacher is speaking in the target language 90% or more of the time and if the student is engaged and motivated. It takes seven to 12 years to reach advanced-low proficiency. Advanced-low proficiency, the gold, the top Seal of Bileiteracy award, is often earned by our students who are heritage speakers or students who are in international baccalaureate programs. Advanced-low is also the proficiency level that our teachers are required to have in order to be a world language teacher in the state of Kansas. So now the good news. Statistics in progress. And I'm going to put a chart up here, and it's three columns for the last three years. And we're going to start at the top and read from left to right. So you can see that participating districts have gone from 10 to 24 in the last three years. In the first year, we awarded 200 certificates. And this past year, we've doubled that and have reached 406 awards. If you ignore the first proficiency level there and look at 2017, 18, 2018, 19, intermediate-mid represents about 83% of the awards, and advanced-low, or the gold award, is about 17% of students are earning that award. And I've put this on a handout as well so that you have this information. In the next slide, you can see the growth in the number of languages in which we can certify students as being proficient. So you can see that we've gone from four traditional languages taught in high school. And last year, we expanded and added Japanese. Arabic should have been on that list, too. Actually, there was one student last year. And then this year, you can see that we've increased again. And I've already heard from districts and schools that are going to be, including Chinese, Tamil, Tagalog, and Lao. And Vietnamese was awarded this year. Wichita, that's a Wichita school that had those. So that concludes my update, and I'm happy to take questions or hear your comments.
Thank you very much. We do have a question. Jim Porter?
Yes. Is American Sign Language considered a world language? And is it something that would be considered at some point for the Seal of Bileiteracy?
Yes. It's maybe a little hard to see there, but number nine this year, American Sign Language. No, that's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we had one award. In fact, I talked to Luann Barron, the superintendent for the School of the Deaf, and about getting students certified for the Seal of Bileiteracy because I think it puts an emphasis on what those students can do. And those students who are speaking two languages also get the cognitive boost and the health boost that comes from being proficient in more than one language.
Seeing no other questions, I want to thank you, and it's really nice to see that growth. I know the first year, we knew it wouldn't be very much, but it's really kind of expanded really this most recent year. So I'm sure it'll continue to do so. That's very good news.
Thank you. I hope to be back here with 600 next year.
That'd be great.
Maybe more, so.
We would like that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Commissioner's Annual Report. So Randy, welcome.
Thank you. I know Mark Tomlin is sitting on the edge of his seat behind me, getting ready to be riveted. He said, "If you don't have enough time, please send me the slides, Dr. Watson." But I told everyone that the chair leaned over to me earlier and said, "You only have one charge today. Get us out at noon." So, yes, ma'am. Okay. So I will get us back on track. Thank you for all of your work. I'm going to talk some about that, really kind of break up an annual report over two cycles. And the reason I'm not doing it all today, one, it will be because of time. Two, the SAT and ACT results statewide keep getting pushed further and further back on embargoed status. So while I have those, we can't release those until the end of October. And I always like to combine academic achievement, state assessments, and looking at all of that in combination. So that's why. You, Peggy will pass out to you a draft. So this isn't going anywhere except you'll have it to look at today. And then we've got some cleanup to do. And so this hasn't gone into publication yet, but we wanted you to have it as we go through today. And think about this thing of really taking a look at the annual part of the work that you do. You know, I was just thinking as we went through the public comments section today. And if you think about your agenda even this month, whether it's a discussion on dyslexia, a discussion on ACT, the Seal of Bileiteracy, there's so many things that you are doing that just a few years ago, as we think about the 50th year, that you weren't doing. And that's created a terrific amount of work. I just want to say thank you. Everywhere I go, honestly, they don't know your name. They know the work that you're doing. Sometime, we're going to get them to know your name, too, and that's going to be great. Yeah. But we just appreciate the work that you're doing on behalf of kids across the state. This vision means something. Every month, I show that, but it means something. And it means something, I guess, for the people. You have the 50 years of football book there, and every Friday night, we do keep score. And so for lots of people, keeping score really, really matters. And I think you want to keep score. I think you always have to be careful. And so I'm going to always temper a lot of what I'm going to tell you today and always in that whenever you keep score, that score doesn't tell you everything about the success of a child. It's a complicated way in which we look at the world in which we're going through. Recently, there was a conference at Georgetown University. What was interesting about that conference, it was to target how we look at assessment and how we look at that success of student. But they had a panel, and you're not going to see the panel today. You're going to see kind of the welcome. But the panel was made up of two people that represented President Bush's cabinet and Newt Gingrich's staff when he was Speaker. It also represented President Obama when he was president. And so it had two Democrats, two Republicans, and then it had a couple of educators. It had a state school chief on there and also some educators to discuss how do we help every kid be successful? And are policies driving that or getting in the way of that? That's really what we're discussing. So this is Joel Rose. Joel's a former teacher, and now he runs a company taking a look at this. I'm going to just share with you kind of his opening to this conference that was called "The Iceberg Syndrome", meaning are we really looking beneath the surface? You can look it up. I'd be happy to send you this hour-long. I've asked some of our staff to weigh in on it. Joel actually looks at mathematics. He was a mathematics teacher, but I think it's applicable to everything that we're doing.
It's going to take a lot more than just shifts in these policies if we're ever going to have schools that are more tuned to each student's unique strengths and needs. But policies shouldn't be blocking this either. Teachers, schools, and organizations like ours will simply not be able to create innovative solutions unless policymakers create the space for those new approaches to emerge. The fact of the matter is that while schools and districts want to innovate, that comes second to showing gains on next year's state test. We've worked in too many communities where administrators and teachers will say, sometimes in tears, something like, "I know what you all are trying to do is much better for our kids in the longer term, but if we don't show higher test scores next year, I could lose my job. So please just play the game that they want us to play." That game is the wrong game for kids. What matters is long-term mastery, ensuring all students are able to achieve the ultimate objective of college and career readiness, even though some may take different paths to get there and will get there at different times.
This is an hour-long conference. This is just the introduction. But I think it's a message that's hard to articulate, but it's a message, and I'll say it again next month when we talk about academic achievement, that we have to constantly discuss, which is academic achievement is vitally important. But as educators, we've spent at least 20 years, Jim, probably 40 or 50, saying, "If you measure that score, you can tell whether or not someone's going to be successful." And that's erroneous. It is a huge part of the puzzle, but it's part of the puzzle. It's like taking, looking at that football scoreboard, who's ahead in the first quarter and saying, "I know who's going to win." You might know who's headed that way. So we have to balance, and you've done a really wonderful job. But every day when I'm out, someone in the public grabs me to want to talk about a test score. In a vacuum, outside of something. And you heard some, I think, some very people articulate that as related to ACT earlier. So this is about the balanced look. But as we look at what's going on with our schools, I always want you to think about this as we think about the work with redesign because there are three things that our system is based on and that we continue to be based on and always will be based on as we go forward. Right now, the age that a child is determines what curriculum, what assessments, and what they learn. Right? The most common and easiest is at a high school level. A freshman, that's an age, goes to a class called English, and they have it for a defined period of time. That's an organizational structure. Time is the other. Time is the, is, if you look at those two things and you don't compensate for those two things, the third area becomes really difficult. And this is what you hear from teachers. Because what happened over generations that we're celebrating today, 50 years, right, is that the family structure has dramatically shifted. I'm not here to make context of whether that's right or wrong. It just has shifted. Today, if there are both parents in the home, they tend to work during earning power that in one generation only one earned. So we continue to do these three together. And what you hear from an elementary teacher is, "How am I going to meet the needs of all 26 of my kids? They're so wide. They're so different. And I want to, but we raise the content." And again, I'm going to postpone the academic discussion, but I want you to know this. When people say, "Well, if they can't read," you know, there's this misconception about reading and literacy that when you look at a Level 2 on our four-point scale, that if they're not at Levels 3 and 4, which we'll talk about next month, they are illiterate because that's the way we think about it. We think about a different error, that if, "I can't read." No. When you read at a Level 3 or 4 on our state exam, it is the second highest in the nation in those cut scores that our teachers derive. So it is a much different level than when any of us went to school. It's not "See, Dick, Run." It's much higher level than that. You couple that with struggles that teachers have, and these three things are what boxes in. And you'll hear this. Well, given the time constraints that we have, we're going to have to think about these three things differently if our- if our content and our standards and social, emotional are going to be there going in the future." Think about this. Any of you have the original Kindle? I did. I had the original Kindle. If you remember this Kindle, that when it shifted, like when it pulled up the text, there was this kind of ghosting that happened, like similar to the old Xenif TV in the apartment that I rent, you know, where, you know, it's just not very clear. But this was the original Kindle, all right? 12 years later, this is the Kindle Fire. Now, Ben's probably going to say, "Come on, Randy, they still sell an original Kindle." Yes, they do a black and white, but they didn't sell the Fire at all 12 years ago. So in 12 years from the original, lots have changed. I thought I would show you what could arguably be one of the most successful cars ever made. This is the Honda Accord, all right? You could argue, but this is a 12-year-old Honda Accord. Looks pretty good, right? And, you know, a lot of those are still running today. Look at this car compared to this car, a brand-new Honda Accord. Doesn't look a whole lot different. In fact, most of the changes are under the hood, but it doesn't look much different. Why? If you compare that to the Model T, it looks much different. So new technology, when it's new, you have lots of different iterations. And then you become where there's not much change. It's all happening kind of behind the scenes, right? Even if we make this electric, it still kind of looks the same. We're past this real huge innovation about change. We're in the early stages, as you know, to trying to change. So there's lots of different change. But we're transitioning with those first few districts into the execution. And when you get into the execution, then change happens less, and you have to institutionalize it, right? You become the Honda Accord, and you'll make little changes. Right now, we're making large changes. This is the journey. 2015, you can see it right over here. We went out across the state and listened to Kansans. We formulated a vision. By 16, you had set the goals to that vision. We'll talk about those today. And then we started off trying to recruit some districts that want to take this. Where in some ways, you could argue, where are we? Well, we're five years from the time we started it. We said by 2026, we'd like to have everyone engaged in this. This is our timeline. But as I talked about age, time, and content, this is an artificial timeline set by the state board. We can alter it, speed it up, we can slow it down. But this is, we said, "We want to try to get this movement going within 10 years." And what you're trying to do is change the 50 years behind you in about a 10-year, 12-year period. Pretty ambitious. But as I talked this morning to some people not from Kansas that are here studying Kansas education here for a suburban conference with Topeka, they said to me, because they've been immersed in the last few days, "We don't even understand how you're doing this. We don't even understand how all of you are at least talking about trying to do this. Higher education, you heard about changes going on there, right, in licensure? Or school districts, or private colleges, or service centers, or all these people that have some playing the game and were trying to move this forward." They were just remarkable. So this is the progress that we're making. 266 school districts over 160-some schools doing their best to try to do this work. You got to see firsthand liberal and dyed-in. And if you can't get excited about what was going on in Dyed-in, Kansas, you just can't get excited, right? Teachers in the real struggle. And I was setting in a phenemic awareness. We were learning, "Bah, bah, bah, pretty important," right? Those were pre-K kids through second-grade kids, all blended together where teachers were sharing kids, right, at their stages. And then you heard the kid talking about his project, because then they were moved to projects where they apply it, then they were coming back. They don't have it all right, but they're really struggling in your vision and trying to put that into action. And that was just so much fun to see that's going on in so many school districts. So as you know, you set forth some goals. I'm going to talk primarily today about the four of those. Kindergarten awareness, individual plan, high school graduation, and post-secondary completion. We've talked a lot about social, emotional, and the work being done there. I'm not trying to slide it, but in the essence of time, we're going to talk about those last four. You've seen this chart a lot. It's the graduation, the five-year success, the five-year post-secondary effective rate. I want to just show you one of those district, like all 286. And actually, when you consider the private systems that we accredit, we're in the 290s. I'm very proud of all of them. They're at various levels of struggle. And this is one I shared with the council superintendents last week. This is Pittsburgh, Kansas. I want you to know this, though. Pittsburgh, Kansas, it sits in southeast Kansas, is bordered directly to the north by a school district named Frontenac. In fact, as we drove to Pittsburgh High School, we took a little back road. And Dale and Craig, who were in the car with me, said, "Are we in Frontenac or are we in Pittsburgh?" The school district, because it just blends together, all right? And this is Pittsburgh. Our goal is a 95% graduation rate and a 70-75% post-secondary effective. They're at 39. That's way below where we would like to be if we were on a football field keeping score. And we are, and they know that. But they are also out predicting their risk factors by a 5% margin. It's almost a standard deviation above that. And you also notice, if you look at the pink, let's look what's going on with the number of kids going on to earn a certificate or to go to welding school or to go to Neosho County or Pittsburgh State University. It's gone from 43.9% to 50% over that five years. They're moving in the right direction. And you know what? It's a struggle every day. It's hard. It's hard, hard work. In the past, we never would have recognized Pittsburgh because they're too low on that achievement. But doing what no other state's doing is saying, "Yes, Pittsburgh, you got to get to 70." But you know what? We're going to look at your growth through KISA. We're going to look at your risk factors. If we go just to the north of Pittsburgh, Frontenac has a much different clientele. You wouldn't know. You could drive right through, I mean, you think you're in Pittsburgh, you're in Frontenac School District. They have a different clientele, and they have different risk factors. And that's what I think is so important about the work that you're doing as we look at this. So yes, we want to get to 70 to 75. We also want every district to have a chance to get there and be recognized for when they are. So Frontenac, they have to beat their risk factors too. People say all the time, "You know, if I'm in a high-poverty area, it's just not fair compared to someone that does not." Those are just different challenges. They're just different. They're not one is easier than the other. They present to them different challenges. So I know you are proud. I am proud. There was our baseline. There was our baseline in 15, five-year average, 44% post-secondary effectiveness. Last year, up 2%. This year, up another 2%. Over that period of time, it's gone up 4%. 4% more students are graduating high school and going on to earn a second piece of paper in the state of Kansas. Is it 70%? No. Could you be beat up because it's not 70%? Sure. But if you're going to lead the world, you have to take some risk. You have to be vulnerable. You've asked schools to do that. 66 are, right? They're vulnerable. And they're doing everything in their power to try to hit it right. And we'll have to adjust. We'll have to do that. But right now, when you just look at the hard fact data, you're looking at kids that have enough skills to not only graduate high school, but to go on to earn something else at Wichita State or at Pittsburgh State or at Harvard or Tulsa Welding School or at a certificate and apprenticeship to be an electrician. They have the skills to do that. We have to say all the time, and we have to trust those schools that they will do the work, right? And those local boards will monitor to do the work. Here's your defining success. As I said, I'm going to talk a lot about academic and technical skills next time, employability. But civic engagement's pretty important. We honored, some of you were there, we honored the CANN Awards just not too long ago. They're the schools that we honored. They joined the schools from last year. Those are, you probably remember Santa Fe Trail. You were there a year ago as one of your redesigned schools. Schools that received promising practices are those that didn't have all of the criteria met to be an award winner, but had one or two. And so there are promising practices. And as you know, we're rolling that civic engagement to our district awards as it will be coming up here over the next year. Early childhood update. So just, I'm going to go through some of your board goals and just give you an update on it. If you remember, your goal, every student, each student arrives at kindergarten, socially, emotionally, and academically prepared. Now here's what you know. We don't control this space at all. We don't control the, right? We're not there at the hospital when the child's born. We're not age one or two. Some would argue we shouldn't be, right? But we're an influencer. Most superintendents, if not all superintendents that we represent are influencers in their community in this space about how we go about doing this. And we chose a snapshot to give us a view of that for children when they enter, about language and literacy and how to engage families. It's a great conversation with families. And as you know, it's called ages and stages, and there's two parts to that. There's kind of the academic part, and there's a social, emotional part. We have given that this year to 20,000 kindergarten-age students have completed both of those. Now, the 4,000 students have completed one or the other. We need to get them to complete both, and then we would, this is public and private, every accredited school system. We're learning a lot from this. We're learning that it's hard to engage parents. Sometimes parents see their kids differently than we do. What a valuable experience that is, right, that we can learn from each other. This is about learning, what could we do to help families engage? As you know, they went around the state and asked, "What do we need to do in this early childhood space?" And as you remember from the presentation Melissa and Amanda did, childcare is the number-one need across our state because none of our systems have adapted to the changing families. The work system hasn't adapted, right? Some European systems, if you're a mom or a dad, you get six months off pay. You may be able to take a year off pay to take care of your family. We haven't adjusted in most of our workplaces to that. And we certainly haven't adjusted school-wide to that either. As you know, we have a little early literacy grant going on. We're getting feedback now in the next phase of that. There you can see some deadlines. We are applying for the implementation part of that grant. Say "we." It's a collaboration with a lot of different agencies. We're just part of that. And we have a very cool parent leadership conference that I will be at taking place in November. This is, you know, Regina said, "I'm violating all the protocol of PowerPoint." Well, this throws up on it, right? I gave you that because Peggy will share this with you, and you can read it, right? Just look at the top one. What does kindergarten mean? When children are in kindergarten, they have had at least five, in some cases, six years of learning and development that's already taken place with their family. That's a lot of time, if you think about then the time in school. Go down to the bottom. With only three years between kindergarten and the start of third grade, where when most children begin taking state assessments, which is true in our state, there's no time to begin from scratch. This talks about that. Parents are asking us whether they're high socially, economically, or low. You've got to help us think about the different family dynamics and partner with us differently. Not just us. Not just us. A huge collaboration in this space. Also want to talk to you about IPS, or Individual Plans of Study. As of last year, every student has to have one in the middle grades going forward. We're in the early stages of this, and yet this is probably the state goals, the first one that we rolled out. But I got to meet two really great middle school students from Topeka that are in kind of their, "We're going to go to college" programs. And they had on their nice clothes, and they got up at 7:30 in the morning. They were a little tired. And they were practicing their presenting skills with me, and I just got a chance to be with them just a little bit. And they, so they, you know, this, I planned to go, both of them planned, I planned to go to Topeka High. And then when I'm out of Topeka High, I plan to go, and of course, you know me, I don't care where you're going to go. Tell me what you're interested in. Tell me what you like. That throws every kid off. We've programmed them to tell us where they're going to go to school. That's not an IPS, because that's what everyone asks, right? What are they passionate about? That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to find their strength. So you'll get a kid, take a strength, "Mom, it told me I wanted to be a truck driver." I don't want to be a truck driver. It just tells you based upon what you said, what are some occupations? Again, don't get enamored by the occupations. Conversation about, "What is it? I like to work outdoors. I like to work with my hands. I like to do research. I don't like to speak in front of people. I love science. I don't like science." These are all cues to what a student might do in the future. So one of the young men, Ben, I was thinking about you, said, "I want to, I love music. I want to be in music," right? I said, "Do you love it enough? It's going to be like an occupation, you think, for you? Or it's going to be a hobby?" "Well, I'm thinking about going to the finest schools of music." I said, "Well, have you ever been to New York or California?" The two schools he's thinking about. "No." I said, "Well, how do you get there?" "I have to practice a lot." You do, and you better also have some scheme of what will it look like when you get there, right? Because he doesn't know. So I want him to go see that. So you have to have a general post-secondary plan and a portfolio. This is a, I love this. Our staff put this together. You've seen this if you've been at the governor's council. This is our work-based continuum on IPS. Now, you might say, "Career awareness is elementary. Career exploration is middle school. Career preparation is high school." Don't get, it's not a hard fast, right? It gets blurred. That's in general, that's true. But as we look at this and you think about this, think about career awareness to start with. And then here's some things that we do. Guest speakers. Here's the amount of schools, and look at the orange, there's the amount of schools that offer guest speakers. There's the amount that do career fairs. There's the amount that do field trips. There's the amount that do tours. Those are all increasing. If you're an elementary student here in Topeka, we have hundreds of students in Topeka as an example whose fear of what they know is five blocks around that home they grew up in and around that school. That's it. That's all they know. How later on do I determine what I want to be if I never can imagine it? Field trips are vitally important to elementary schools. They are vitally important. So are people coming in, talking about what they do. But if I don't have any reference point, you know, to someone coming in saying, "You can be an eye doctor." "Right, can I?" I don't know what that means. But if I can take a field trip to go see what that is, that's vitally important. We also have career exploration. There you can see the amount of job shadowing. Over half our schools are putting together job shadowing. Now, let's look at that. Is that a half-full, half-empty? Over half our schools, that number's up. We could, almost half our schools are not providing job shadowing. So you can pick and choose whether you want to be optimistic or pessimistic. I'm optimistic, but in any of this, you'll be always, when you go into school, they will show you the program that some kids are involved with. Every kid ought to have the opportunity to job shadow multiple things. There's nothing more beneficial than have someone saying, "I can't wait to be a nurse. Can't wait to be a nurse," and pass out when they see the side of blood on the job shadow. That you just know you're going to save mom and dad a lot of money going to nursing school and knowing that the first time you see blood, you're not going to make it, right? Job shadowing, and they can be short in duration, but they're so, so beneficial. Mock interviews, as you see their career mentoring. And then, yes, when we get toward the end, we want some internships. You can see only 30% of our schools offering that right now. Clinical rotations, community-based experiences, youth apprenticeships, school-based. This is kind of the hot thing, right? I'm going to run a bank in my building. I'm going to have a student run vinyl printing. Wonderful. These are wonderful, and schools are doing it. What I challenge all of us, though, is how many kids are getting access to that program? Because they're wonderful, but they can be costly. They're great. They really, you know, we were at Hayesville recently, and they run a great one. But we need kids involved. It's just like if you've got a baseball team. We want more kids to be involved in the baseball team, right, as we go forward and do this work. So I know all of you think this. I want to end today. I've got just a couple minutes. Did pretty good, Madam Chair. And in self-disclosure, I'm going to share with you an email that I received, actually from a principal, from a teacher that is in one of the new programs, all right? But in full disclosure, she's a former student of mine. So I say this. So I'm going to try my best to insert not the real name of the student, not the real name of the school, and get this. So bear with me. I had this email in my ready box since I had this email in my, in my ready box since May, but I know everyone's so busy, I'm just now sending it here in the fall. Had to share my excitement of witnessing a student accomplish something he never thought was possible. So when we think about each student, this student is Sam, not his real name. He's 20 years old. Think about that already in a public school. He was denied an education by his daddy. Did not go to school at all until he came to Kansas to live with his mom. He has Tourette's Syndrome. He reads and does math on a fifth grade level. He's 20 years old. Reality. He worked hard with the help of many, many, many people. He completed the credits required for his high school diploma while also working on his welding certificate at the local trade school. In addition, he works at Walmart 40 hours a week in the automotive center to earn money for his living expenses so that he can complete that welding certificate. All right? That's the student and he graduated last May. He will get his welding certificate in December of this year. Each student. Then she reflects. I reflect back to last May, I'm grateful for those that created innovative programs because I was a transition. She's a special ed teacher today. And I want to thank state board members for having the courage to do that. I want to thank Fort H State, that's where she went to school, and special ed director and my superintendent, principal had faith in me. I sit here tonight though, trying to balance college work, schoolwork, and trying to think, how in the world am I going to meet these deadlines and still take care of the students that come into my classroom? She goes on to talk about her own family and she said, you know what? By the way, if you know this young lady, she's a perfectionist. And she said, I had some, had, my, my youngest son had some surgery and I thought, I'm going to be late on this paper I have to turn in to complete, you know, my license. It's 20%. I'm going to lose my 4.0. I'm not very happy about this. I cried, I worried, I fretted. Then my principal said to me, do you think Sam, that's the student, gives a darn whether you get a 4.0 or not? She said, put it all in perspective for me. I was late, but I want everyone to know I still got an A with .1% to spare. So congratulations. My school district is beginning our launch year and redesign, trying new things with our students. It's like having a newborn. Everyone's so excited and then reality hits. You're never going to get to sleep. You're, you've never been so tired in your life. It's a bit painful, but there's always positive growth and believe it or not, our students are thriving. So here's why I'm sharing. Although I get a bit discouraged because, but I'm always hopeful. I just want my students to have the best experience. So I thought, given everything you're doing, here's an experience of a transition program, right? From someone who is not. Here's a success story of a young person whose story never gets told in any kind of statistic, right? Other than one student. And yet I think it speaks to the work that you've been doing. Madam Chair, I'm over time, but thank you for the opportunity and I would stand for any questions between you and lunch.
Randy, thank you very much. And thanks for ending with that story. Because not only is it each student, many times it's each teacher too.
Yes.
And what can we do to help support our teachers as, as they work with this redesign and thinking about, you know, how do we meet the needs of each of those children? Are there any questions, as Randy said, between now and lunch?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a meeting. Some of us are on a meeting for lunch and I know Jim Porter, Michelle, you get to join us. And who else was coming? Janet. Okay. All right. Then we will be reconvening at 1:30. So thank you very much. I'd like to bring the afternoon meeting of the State Board of Education together. Please note that Steve Roberts is here. I think he had to go do something with his vehicle, but he is here for the afternoon. This afternoon, we've, we're certainly looking forward to having a presentation this afternoon from our dyslexia committee. This started basically when we had a legislative task force on dyslexia that our Jim Porter chaired. And then from their recommendations, they established this dyslexia committee. And Cindy Haddiki is here today to present to us. And you may have some members of your committee that you might want to introduce also. So welcome Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. Yes, I do have several members here and I have an introduction slide, so when I get to that, I'll make sure that they get recognized. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board, and thank you, Dr. Watson, for allowing me to be here today. It's really a pleasure to get to talk to you on the behalf of Kansas children and on behalf of reading. Very excited to be here for that recommendation. My committee members are here today. I have several of them here in the audience. Jamie Callahan is here from Auburn Washburn. Deb Farr is here also from Auburn Washburn. These two ladies here. Lori Mann is sitting in the back. She's from Emporia State University. She's a professor here. I don't see anyone else in the audience that is here however, but I would like to say thank you to each and every one of the members who are on the committee. They worked very hard. They had Kansas children in their vision every single decision we made. They committed to several meetings. They also committed time on their own dime to be here and to work for progressing what the standards were from the recommendations of the task force to be in effect at KSDE. So I want to thank each and every one of them. A little bit of a review of the process. In the beginning, this began as a legislative task force on dyslexia. It was a grassroots effort. It was chaired by Mr. Jim Porter. Through the fall and early winter of 18 and 19, the committees met, they broke into subcommittees and they voted and approved unanimously recommendations that should come forward to our department. In March, our department started to get some things together regarding that. We started looking at the recommendations specifically, seeing how that they would impact the educational structure in our state. We put a committee together in May and we met through, last, October 7th was our last meeting actually. And we went through each of these recommendations, looking at timelines, looking at the effects that it would have on our education system. We will start with the pre-service recommendations. In your handout, you do have all of the recommendations listed in order, so yes.
Board members, if you look in your agenda, that's on page 31. So if you want to follow along there.
And I'll, on each slide, there is a note at the bottom and it tells you which page number and which, well, what number to look at. That might help you. So the first recommendation I would like to bring to your attention is pre-service recommendations for pre-service teachers. The language of the original recommendation has been altered slightly. The underlined emboldened print has been altered and this is the recommendation we would like to bring forward. We would like for the Kansas State Board of Education to modify educator prep program standards to integrate the International Dyslexia Association's knowledge and practice standards for teachers of reading. And we added this language to provide specificity or clarity of the essential elements of literacy instruction so that we were intentional about why we wanted these standards to be changed. Let me see here. The Center for Effective Reading first published these knowledge and practice standards, which were adopted by the International Dyslexia Association. So we are asking for standard review to begin as soon as possible, no later than August of 2021. And we want all universities, we realize they'll have to modify programs and class structures. So we ask that all universities in Kansas be on board with the new changes by August of 23. So that was the first one. Would you like questions now or would you like to wait till the end?
Let's go ahead and present all of them.
Sure.
And we'll come back.
The next pre-service recommendation is regarding testing on the science of reading. This one is asking that we ask K-6 teachers, ELA-endorsed educators, reading specialists, and special educators to pass an examination of their knowledge of the science of reading. We would like for the school board to approve a test or several tests for universities to use that satisfy this requirement. We would like for the timeline for testing to begin on August 21st with the initial changes. And we would like full university implementation by fall of 24. I will add that K-6 educators are already meeting this with their new practice exam. So K-6 educators' practice is already covering this requirement. The next section is on professional learning, which impacts teachers in the field currently practicing. On this standard, in your board document, it's on page two, we did change some of the language in this. We changed the language to make sure that our evidence-based practices are consistent learning opportunities and the training is consistent and universal across the state. The nature of this training should include procedures to identify a student who struggles to read or who has dyslexia and an introduction to intervention strategies and procedures. The content of the professional learning is on this slide. So they would, we would like to recommend that the professional development that is devised by the State Department include all of these components. And when it's trained, it's universal training, so everyone has the same message and all teachers are getting the same content during a training period. Our next recommendation is also regarding professional learning. We, the committee looked at this recommendation several times. We decided that we didn't want to change any of the language in it. This is encouraging colleges of education in Kansas to develop courses of study that model practice and standards, excuse me, that have the IDA, knowledge and practice standards embedded in them and that model a ELA endorsement or a reading specialist endorsement that would have a practicum and, and they would have a supervised students to look at and, and work with universities very closely with that. Sorry, I lost my notes. We are asking for a letter of encouragement to universities by July of next year. I do know that there is a university in Kansas and maybe there are others I'm not aware of that are already developing courses and certificates for dyslexia. So this is already a ball that's rolling, which is, is good to hear. We will reach, discuss the screening and evaluation recommendations next. In this recommendation, we would like to have all accredited schools screen children for characteristics of dyslexia or who, students who may be, may be at risk of dyslexia. We did change a little bit of the language on this recommendation. We want it in accordance with universal screening and evidence-based practices. Universal screening is used to allow educators to design intervention and then to monitor the progression towards skills. Screeners should be brief. They should be highly predictive. After universal screening is conducted, we should have two groups of children, those who have symptoms, those who do not. This is a extensive process and, or there's extensive evidence, excuse me, that supports the fact that early intervention is critical for struggling readers. This is a very important recommendation that will impact children across our state. We would like for this universal screening to begin next fall school year, August of 2020. The next one is regarding accredited school systems using a rigorous tiered system of supports. We did add the language that these supports should be asked to find by the foundational structures of KISA and subject to external review. The subject to external review part is part of what the foundations of KISA already has. There are 12 ingredients that are involved in a tiered system of supports for our state and these align with the recommendations we would like to have put forth. We'd like this timeline of implementation for all accredited schools in our state to be August of 21. The next recommendation is regarding school district use for vetting, asking our department to vet and develop tools to screen children and assessment students for characteristics of dyslexia and for students who struggle to read. We want to make sure that school districts are using quali, are highly effective materials and that they're using evidence-based materials as well. They, this recommendation was put forth so that we could be sure that all schools were using a uniform practice when doing the screening. The next recommendation section is on evidence-based reading practices. Again, this will impact teachers in the field. It will also impact students who are coming out of university. We would like to utilize structured literacy here as the explicit and evidence-based approach to teaching literacy. We want this to have a checklist so that schools can compare their current programs and resources to that of structured literacy. They would be able to supplement as needed if they find that their, our, their resource doesn't meet this need. We also are asking that TAZN is responsible for training and vetting some of this structured literacy practice. It is, should be noted here that structured literacy, there are lots of thoughts about structured literacy. We had a lot of conversation about this in our committee. One of the components of structured literacy is a trademarked, capital S, capital L, that structured literacy. That does refer to programming, but it also is an umbrella term. And it, it talks about the best practice in structured, structured literacy instruction. In, if we state it as lowercase s and lowercase l, structured literacy, we really are talking about pedagogical practices that involve teaching children to read. So it's not recommending a program, but recommending a process of teaching. Just wanted to make that clear. We would like for the checklist to be published in August of 2020 and structured literacy to be implemented in schools by August of 21. The next recommendation involves creating a handbook. We would like for the Department of Education to develop a handbook with dyslexia in mind and it should involve input from a broadway array of stakeholders in our state, including parents, teachers, and district-level administration. We'd like this handbook created by August of 20 that would go right in hand with the screening. The next recommendation is that the Board of Education should identify a dyslexia coordinator in our department and we would like that, that position to begin in July of 20. The final thing that the recommendation committee has is a definition of dyslexia. The Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia approved this definition and we are putting this to the school board to approve as well. We would like this definition to be what schools refer to when we talk about students who have dyslexia. I will touch on three recommendations that the task force brought forth. There, there were recommendations in each of these subcategories for funding. However, that funding comes through our legislature. But in order for these things to move forward and to be implemented fully, we really, it will impact professional learning if funding is not available. It will impact universal screening for some school districts if there's no funding available. School system training is a huge need and we would need to train teachers and funding would need to be available for that. And higher education will also need to be receiving some funding so that they can train professors and they can get their, their standards changed as well. That concludes my presentation of the recommendations. I'm happy to take your questions. I do want to leave you with this thought. Before you ask a question though, Frederick Douglass made this quote. I know when he made the quote, he was referring to being a slave or being free. But once you do learn to read, you are set forever free and that's what we want for our children in Kansas.
Thank you Cindy. I know this has been a lot of work for your committee and the task force before. This is very important work for taking a look at how we deal with students with dyslexia, struggling readers, maybe the broader category. I know there's a number of questions. I would like to clarify first because this is probably the, one of the larger questions I've been getting and you mentioned it, but as far as licensure is concerned.
Yes ma'am.
Those teachers who come out with, because this is fitting in several categories. So the ones who have the elementary education license, that will now be, that is already covered in their test that they take. So they won't be expected to take another.
No ma'am.
Assessment. Now, the other categories which, and I'll see if my memory's any good, include special education.
That's correct.
Reading specialist and then the ELA for secondary.
Yes, and there are two endorsements for ELA. There's a five eight endorsement, so there's a middle school instruction and then a high school endorsement for six twelve as well.
So do any of those currently have like the science of reading material in their current praxis test?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so that's something that the department will look at and will determine now. Do these tests have to be a praxis test or can it be something else that might be established by the department or somebody?
Well, the criteria was for the committee that, that you all approve a test that, that people in our department say is, is fitting of the science of reading. I don't think that the requirement was a praxis, but it is a requirement that they understand the foundations of reading and how reading instruction develops over time. But praxis was not part of the recommendation.
So there still could be some work to be done as far as either looking for a test or maybe creating something that would qualify. Cause I know a lot of folks are concerned about the cost of tests.
Absolutely.
And I get that. You know, you've got people coming out of college that don't have a lot of disposable income. So there may be some things that the department may still be able to work with there.
Yes ma'am, that's correct.
All right, well, I'd kind, that's been kind of my burning question folks have been asking me. We do have a number of questions and I will start with Jim Porter.
Yeah, maybe, maybe more comments than questions. Would you go back to your slide on pre-service please? I guess I could have started lower and worked up.
Oh, it's fine.
One of the, oh, I'll start here.
Is it the next one?
Show me the next one.
The test one?
Let's go back before that.
Okay.
When we develop the program standards and and, and I don't expect, you may not know the answer to this, but I think it's something that we need to know. Are the colleges and universities prepared? What do they have to do to be prepared to meet the changes if we require the explicit instruction in structured literacy? And if you don't know that, that's okay, but we have people here that are representatives of universities that can probably answer that.
From the information I've gathered from, from the, my colleagues at the university level. Many universities are already looking at the IDA standards and they're looking at the, the knowledge and practice standards and seeing how their curricula align with these standards, what holes there are. So it, it will be a systematic view of, of their programming. They're going to have to see where holes are and fill those holes. So as to how much, it depends on the university, I believe. I, I haven't talked to all representatives from each university, so I can't fully answer that.
And I've had discussions with several universities and that's, it's consistent that they are anticipating this process and moving forward. And I think they need to be commended for doing that. Let's go to the, the slide that relates to the test. And it says approve a test or multiple tests. I wonder, and we may do this, those of you that are on the dyslexia task force, we may want to discuss instead of test, method. Is there a method? Because I, I think that, that we are very concerned with accountability. We're concerned with whether or not the person that is going to be teaching reading has the skills to do that. And that may, there may be other things other than a test to do that. And I'm wondering if perhaps that's a legitimate thing for us to consider that there may be other options other than a test.
I believe there could be other options depending on the university and the requirement. I know from my committee's work, the, the core of what we want teachers to know is the science of reading and how literature, our reading progresses from language to reading on print. So we want to make sure that that science of reading is included in any method used to assess students.
And I know I've had correspondence with a lot of people who were assuming that we were going to recommend a specific reading program. And I think I need to make it clear that, and you've already said this, that as a matter of fact, we met with Jack Fletcher, who is a researcher from the University of Houston. And he basically told us that there are a number of explicit programs and that there's no, there's not a great deal of scientific proof that one's better than the other. So we are not saying you've got to do X program. We're saying that, that, that that would be a local decision, but it has to be evidence-based structured literacy program. And I think that's very important because that was a real misconception early on in this process that we've all heard about.
Yeah, it's not only evidence-based, but we really want the explicit part to be in there. Explicit and systematic instruction in those foundational skills is extremely important when students are learning to read. So the explicit part needs to be included with the evidence-based, I think is the way our, our committee viewed that, that statement, so.
And on the screening, it is my understanding that there are screenings that are very inexpensive or even free.
That is correct.
That are available. I want to commend your group. Somebody on this board really pushed for this to be done early. I won't identify that person because I think it's important for us to be able to report to the legislature that, what, what we're, what we have done so that we can move forward with this and I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
There have been large percentages of students that have not been successful readers from the time I was in school, which is before most of you were born. And we have said, oh, we blame the parents or we blame something else. In this day and age, we had, if we're going to meet the needs of each student, each student needs to learn how to read. And this is a major step for, for that. I'm, I'm going to commend you, I'm going to commend your work, I'm going to commend the, the task force. And, and make sure that my colleagues know that I fully support your work and fully support the work of the task, task force. And I believe that it's essential that we move forward expeditiously to meet the needs of students.
Thank you.
Right now.
I completely agree. I think the system of waiting to fail is not working. We have to catch kids before they fail.
Now, Madam Chairman, it is my intention not to say anything else, but that may be a lie.
We do have a couple other members that are on, Ben Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the testing conversation. I've had a conversation with my fellow members, in fact, they got the call right away. We're going to that because it is a concern that I have. We're about to receive the report from the teacher vacancy and supply and I have a very, I have a very sinking feeling that it probably didn't get better this year. But I, I hope to be pleasantly surprised and it goes the opposite way, I don't know. But, so the, so the cost and it's addressing that, that piece. And I, and I hope we can find a way that this cost isn't passed on to our future educators. I don't want to see it go there. I have seven teacher prep programs and all of them are like, our kids are struggling to pay for the test now. The, the praxis exams. And so I appreciate, I appreciate that, that conversation you just had. And this is a conversation because I'm not in this world of, of, of the reading world. I can do music, but not. This stuff is, dyslexia is all-inclusive for any neurological reading disability, correct?
I don't know if I can answer that appropriately or not.
Okay.
Let me look at my resources.
Or is it just the predominant one, but there are other ones out there?
There are other, there are other disorders regarding reading out there. But dyslexia encompasses word level reading, it encompasses spelling, writing, those kinds of things and, and word recall. Which are predominantly what we find when students struggle to read.
Okay, so are these just addressing those students? This is me not being part of the committee and probably rehashing things that Jim probably knows. But, I mean, is it inclusive of those, do we have plans for those kids that have other reading disorders?
It, every, every recommendation has dyslexia, characteristics of dyslexia or students who are struggling to read. What is beautiful about the instruction for struggling readers is it works for all struggling readers. It doesn't just work for the children who are dyslexic or have characteristics of dyslexia, it works for all children.
Okay. I, I appreciate that because I, I, I don't know that world very well. And then, and this might be a question maybe more for Jeanette or maybe even Randy. The KISA recommendation, the accreditation. And what work, I don't know what this looks like. Does this add, is it just a checkmark box for districts to check off as part of their accreditation? Is it an in-depth accreditation? Because when we talk about implementation of August 21, that next year, we're getting hammered with 180 school districts coming before us for accreditation that year. And to throw this at the last, to make it fully implemented by August of 21. It'll be, it, it's a timeframe, it's a question of how, how integrated is it with the KISA? How much changes would it actually look like in the KISA? Because it is a new process already, which is now the time to change it when it's new. Because nobody says, well, though we didn't do that forever. But what, what, what's the impact on that?
A component that has that KISA in there was.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to that slide.
Was the MTSS.
Yes, right there.
Right.
The RTI.
Right, so it would be part of the foundational structures, which every school district has to say, yes, we've met these. And those are validated in the visit. So that's, that's the level of check that there would be.
Okay, so do we have, but we don't have to restart the process of the ARC?
No.
Or the, the site onsite, OV?
OVT.
OVT.
No.
I forget my acronym.
No change in that.
So they don't have to go back and start from square one?
No.
Okay, because that was, that was a concern, it was like, ah, because that next year we're going to get hammered with accreditation here, so. Thank you, I don't think you have any more questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Deana Horst.
Thank you. I've had some conversations with superintendent or two that have voice concerns. Basically because they have implemented literacy programs recently. And they've asked for research that supports what you all are promoting. And they've asked me if I had it, which I did not. So I'm seeing it says it's evidence-based, but I don't see any.
Components?
Any star and then later I find the, the location that references the, the evidence of that fact. And so I'm wondering if maybe we need to make certain that the field has that information. And also, I guess they're concerned about the expense of eventually needing to, to change something that they just changed.
I, I understand that. And one thing I can tell you is that I believe the thoughts of our committee are, you can take any program you're using and take this dyslexia, structured literacy checklist, compare your resource to that checklist. And if you have missing components, it's a supplement. It's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, but those foundational components of, of literacy at kindergarten and first grade are so important that I, I think the cost is worth it. That's just my, my, my opinion.
Well, and I don't think they're denying that aspect, but I think the concern is we don't know what the research is and whether it matches with what we know.
The program they have.
Because the person who's leading this in one case is, has just recently received their doctorate in literacy. So that's a concern.
I understand that.
And I'm just, and I just visited with one of them and they've asked for resources and research and not received it. So I think from whomever she asked for it, I don't know who it was. But I'm just saying that needs to go out to the field ASAP. And also I wanted to know who does the screening? Because I remember listening to the concerns of parents in the sessions of, that were held at the legislature. And it's extremely expensive. So when you talk about universal screening, is that a screen they already do?
Depends on the school system. Some school systems do three times a year benchmarking with Ames Webb or Fastbridge or Dibbles. That would cover the components of the universal screening. Not all school systems have that. Just depends on the system and what they're using. And if the components of phonology and phonemic awareness are part of that, that benchmarking and screening, that, that depends on the system, it really does.
So I guess my, my concern, I have a huge amount of small districts. And if they're not using that screening already, what expense is this going to be for them? Because what I remember when I was in school is that some of this is, it runs in families.
Mm-hmm, again?
And if you have a large family that you're going to be seeing and possibly cousins and so on, and in your little district, the screening could be extremely expensive. And so I guess I'm saying to KSDE itself and to us that we may have to figure out some way of assisting those school districts so they can participate in a manner that doesn't take all of their new funding.
Yes ma'am, absolutely. And there are several free screeners out there that, that qualify for, for the screening recommendations. There are several out there that we could use if the state wanted to fund it, that all schools use. I mean, there are lots of possibilities, but there are free screeners out there. When you get to the evaluation process, I, I think that gets a little bit more complicated depending on the system and their cooperative or their local special education department. But when we're talking universal screener, it's a quick screener. It should take no more than, than five minutes per child and all children get the same, same screening.
So we are going to say that if you're dyslexic, it is a special ed issue?
No ma'am, no, 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 it's a core instruction issue.
Then if you're talking about co-ops?
I, I, I think I might have misunderstood you, but when you were talking about the expense of the testing, I think that, that goes when we have intervened and it has been successful and intervened and been unsuccessful and intervened and, and we have to get more, more specialized instruction for that child. That's when they would go to the tier three or the special education route. But what we have been talking about is all universal, universal instruction, core instruction. We want this to happen in all classrooms, not, not in special education classrooms necessarily.
And that's what I understood, but then when you mentioned.
I apologize.
I started thinking a different picture. And I, the test has already been mentioned and that's a concern. I also wondered, are the standards that you've listed here, are those different from what we, the standards we've already passed? And if they are, could we get a crosswalk?
Um, are you asking about English Language Arts standards or the knowledge and practice standards from the IDA?
There just is several knowledge and
Yeah, those.
Practice standards.
Yes ma'am, those standards were included in your packet.
Of reading.
Uh huh.
And I'm just saying, it seems to me that maybe we need to see what's, what's added and what's different. So I would like to, I'm not sure anybody else does, but.
I'd be happy to get that for you.
But anyway.
Thank you.
I think that's, any of the others I can maybe visit with you. I think that's, any of the others, I can maybe visit with you personally.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, thank you very much.
Yes.
A lot of information. It's kind of overwhelming, as you guys have been living this, Jim Porter and committee, you know, and we're getting a first real sense of what's going on. But I have a little more history, just to put a perspective on it. I actually started a reading specialist master's degree in 1976 at Wichita State University. A couple of years later, I switched to the dark side and went to administration.
I've done that myself.
Okay. So I, in, in, in the first nine hours that I took in, in reading, I self-analyzed, you know, oh my god, that's what happened to me. Because I'd never been a fast reader, I was a sight reader, word sight reader, each word in total, you know, and I could never read fast, wasn't a good speller. And even in the spelling, obviously, pronunciation was also affected by that as well. So having been a quite, a, I'm not gonna say a victim, but having lived some of this, because it was always, you, you can read better, read faster, and it was a discipline issue, it was, you were lazy, it was other issues that were more social and emotional than they were based in the reality of, of the physiology of reading.
I'm sorry you had to go through that.
Oh, no, it was great.
One of the reasons why we're beating this drum right now.
Well, for a lot of us, it was, we overcame it, you know, but not everybody overcomes it, okay? That said, I'm 100% for you, but I'm also a former school administrator, and I'm also a practitioner of implementation. This is huge.
Yes.
And I'm, you got me, because I, I believe in everything you're doing. But Dina brought up some really valid points about implementation, and sometimes when we're talking about something that's as, as important as this, we tend to forget that there are others who don't see it at the same level of importance. I don't mean to demean them or in any way, or you, but they just haven't, they're not in the continuum of, we gotta do this right away. And I look up here in August of 2021, or 2020, and I'm thinking about all the things that we have as a, as a state board mandated, folks do, like KISA, and was mentioned, we have a little less than 200 school districts that are coming up for accreditation soon, and yeah, it's just another check mark, but if you're a comprehen, a conscientious person doing your KISA report, and, and you've got this here, you're gonna wanna be, you know, what are we doing with it? So, and then we've got districts from Wichita, which is here this morning, you know, 55,000 students, and I also represent school districts that have 60 students. You know, both have capacity issues. I mean, we, we sometimes think if you're small, you don't have the capacity issue. Actually, there's only one person usually who does this, and supervises the cafeteria, and is there on Friday night for the football game. You know, and drives a school bus at times. Yes, you know, I, I've served the largest and the smallest districts in our state, and it was way harder to be in a small district than in a large district.
I completely agree, that's where I served, yes.
Yeah, the, the, the big districts think they got it really hard. No, no, you, no, no, don't even talk about workload, you know. So my concern is, I'm looking at here, you know, and I'm, I'm, I'm seeing all this, you know, every district, KISA, structured learning, IDA, funding, you know, and, and really what we're talking about is changing the culture of our school districts and our, and our preparation programs, which we haven't really, some have mentioned, but we're changing the culture to look at the reading as, as a core base to become a better student and more successful in school, you know. But somehow, and, and maybe Jim, you can help me understand this better, I feel like we're, we're not using a feather, we're using a sledgehammer. Now, just as a warning, you know, I wanna see this thing work, but I'm concerned about issues, and the first thing people are gonna throw at you is the money issue, because that is always, that's a good one to start with. But there's a lot of subcategory issues under there too, that basically you're changing the culture, you're making people rethink what's important in education for the success of students, because they haven't done this. You know, some have individually, by, you know, their own initiatives, you know, if someone comes along and says, this is really cool, we should do this. But generally speaking, our system, from prep to implementation to, in the classroom, is not utilizing this wide scale, and I just see this as, we're gonna ram it into you, and by god, you're gonna have it, and you're gonna like it. And that, that has been a, kind of a start for failure. Not, not that we shouldn't be urgent, but I'm just, I'm trying to measure what I'm hearing in the field, and what I'm hearing here, and my own experiences, so. And I want you to be successful. I want this to work. This is really important, and thank you for the great work you've done. But I just would be a little more cautious on the implementation, not dropping back and saying, well, we'll give you 10 years to do this. That's for redesign, that's not, but at the same time, we have learners out there that this is gonna be first-time learning. And that, that's a hard, that's a hard sell. But good luck, I'm with you, I'm gonna support you 110%, and thank you for all the work you've done. This is really great work.
Well, I appreciate your feedback, thank you.
Porter?
I think it's important for us to remember that the second grader this year has this year, and we have responsibilities for the second grader. I understand everything you said, Jim, and, and so a couple of points I wanna make, I think it is urgent, and I think that we have failed as educators for the last however long. My, my, just using other excuses, yeah, it is gonna be a financial burden, and I, I think we need to recognize that and do what we can to help. Our recommendations to the legislature, however, are gonna help part of the problem, because our recommendations to the legislature will help the public schools. But we had a presentation during, this morning, during our open session, and there is no support, or at least no government support, you know, for the private schools, and that, I mean, those are legitimate issues that we need to, we need to recognize, but the bottom line is, that if we are going to lead the world in the success of each student, we can't wait five years to start making sure that each student has the ability to read. And I, I see that, as you put it, Jim, as success in school, but I also see it as necessary for success in life. I was a struggling reader, as the people on the, on the task force know, and I know that there are social, emotional issues, and I, for those of you that think I messed up, and that's probably true, that's probably part of that, part of that process, because you, it's extremely emotionally upsetting not to be able to be successful and to know that and try to hide that, you know, which is, and so I feel that for those students that are going through that process. I think we need to be aware that this is gonna be a struggle, I think we need to be aware that, that there are gonna be bumps in the road, but I think that they're, they're, the primary reason that I think we need to move expeditiously is that that student has this year. And each year that we postpone, we're accepting the fact that 30% or more of our students are not effectively learning to read. Another issue that I, and I think that should be the primary, we have a responsibility to each child, but there is a huge political issue here too, in that if we don't do something, if we don't take the lead, it will be done for us, and it will be done without the broad discussion about a lot of people at the table, and I think that that's important for us to move forward that way. I stood before the Senate Ed Committee last year, and I was specifically asked by a senator who typically does not support education, is this gonna be another one of those 10-year deals? And I gave him a pretty aggressive timeline, that is, as a matter of fact, is a little more aggressive than what's been recommended to us, because I see the critical issue of this for those two reasons. We, we've got to meet the need of each child, and we've gotta move ahead of those people that would like to implement something else. So I hope, that may or may not have helped, but.
Thank you.
Michelle, Nebraska.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I, just making some comments, thank you for all your work. I think it's a very important issue. I think that children, to be able to be successful, to not be, but we have a bullying task force, to not be bullied, keep teacher retention in the schools, I think they won't be as frustrated, because they'll be properly trained, they'll be able to better help that student right then and there. I, I think all of these things are so important to, you know, we have a bullying task force, we have, and a lot of those kids are probably bullied, just, it's very important, I think it's, I just appreciate all the work you've done, and just wanna make some comments on that.
Well, thank you. The committee, I'm just the spokesperson.
Thank you. I've got a couple specifics under the recommendations, and then a general comment. Under the screening and evaluation, and I think this has been somewhat talked to, it's the second recommendation that has to do with implementing a rigorous tiered system of supports.
Yeah, that's on your screen now.
Right, and what we're talking about here is MTSS, right?
Yes, it doesn't have to be Kansas MTSS, but yes, it's a RTI, a tiered system of support, yes.
Right, and I think as you, as I look at these recommendations, there's a lot of things that folks, we do have in place in some places, but maybe not strategically and consistently.
I would agree with that. There, there's, I, I don't think anyone out here is doing harm intentionally at all. I think that there's a lot of great intentions, but there are a lot of schools that are small, that, that they don't have the resources, they don't have the training, and, and I think something like this would be very beneficial for, for students in those systems.
Okay, and then I have another question under the evidence-based reading practices. And under recommendation number one, the original one, it talks about utilizing the components of the structured literacy checklist from the New Jersey Dyslexic Handbook, Appendix C.
Yeah, we took that out.
Familiar with Appendix C, because I studied that a little bit. And then under the actual recommendation, it says the KSDE will create a guide for selection and implementation of structured literacy practices. I assume it'll probably have some of those similar components.
Yeah, well, we would use that as a model, or in other states as a model, but yes, we, we wanted to take the other state's information out and, and use ours, but-
Right.
That was the intention, yes.
Totally, totally agree. And I think, just a reminder, this today was a receive item, and it will come back next month as an action item. And, you know, I would just like to add my thanks to the committee and to the previous task force. I do think we've got a lot of colleges and universities already doing a lot of really good things. It may take some additional alignment, may take some additional resources, but I do know some of them already require linguistics classes, where a lot of this information is taught. I do know that a lot of schools are using the letters training that KSDE provides, and the science of reading, so there's a lot of things, I think, you know, I think we can't lose sight of the fact that we're already doing a lot of good things.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of good structures in place, we just have to be more strategic and more consistent with that, and I think it's doable. Is the timeline, you know, maybe some folks are a little uncomfortable with that. I think as Mr. Porter said, you know, my grandson's in second grade this year, he's got one year in second grade, now he's a pretty good reader, but you know, some of the kids in his class are, probably aren't. So I think it's of the essence that we've really gotta look at this, and this is important work, it's good work, it's work that we may have to align, realign some resources, but we can do that. So I look forward to you coming back next month, maybe some of the additional things that maybe Dina had asked for.
Absolutely, I'll address that.
Some of those things can go back to us, maybe a little bit of information about some of the trainings that are already available might be able to come back to us, so folks can kind of understand some of the things that are maybe out there. And we look forward to a hearing from you next month with some more information, and that this will be an action item. So again, thanks to the committee that's here, and I think there's some other folks listening to the recommendations, so we appreciate everybody coming and joining us today.
Thank you all for your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to move to the next agenda item, which is an update, update on teacher vacancy and supplies, and highlights of the licensed personnel support, and I do believe Susan is here, there she is. Welcome, Susan. Still have your, oh, that's a smaller thing on your progress. You're better.
It's improving.
Okay, well, we're glad, glad to see you, and we look forward to your report. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and before we get started, I wanna introduce you to Shane Carter.
And Shane is our data systems coordinator on the teacher licensure and accreditation team, and he's gonna, we're kinda gonna play tag here in doing this presentation today, which is all about some of the initiatives and data relative to vacancy and supply and teacher shortages. So to start with, I wanna remind you of some previous work. The Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee was formed out of the Blue Ribbon Task Force, that was a group that was convened and made a final recommendation, a final report that had about 60-plus recommendations. So the Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee has been tasked with continuing the work of that group on issues around vacancy and supply, and they bring their recommendations to you for final approval. So what you see on the slide are some important initiatives that came out of the TBSC, recommendations that you adopted, and these, as you will see, they're very relative to retention and recruitment, and they are reflected in some of the data that you're going to see. So just to refresh, especially for the new board members, we're in the second year of two pilots that were recommended by TBSC. They're called the Limited Apprentice Programs and Licenses. One has to do with special education, high incidence, so, but this pilot program takes degreed individuals that have experience as a special ed para-professional, and it provides them the opportunity to transition into teaching. So after their first semester, which is usually six to nine credit hours from their plan of study, they are issued a limited apprentice license, they teach, then as they continue to complete that approved program while they're being mentored and supervised by the higher ed institution. So that's the Limited Apprentice for High Incidence. The second one, very similar, Limited Apprentice for Elementary Ed. Again, similar requirements, these are degreed individuals, they enroll in an elementary program, they're not required to have been a para or any, any specific capacity, but during their first semester, while they start coursework, they do have to complete a field experience at, at both the middle and primary levels for elementary ed. And then like the high incidence, they're issued the license after that first semester, they can continue to teach in that position while they finish their elementary ed program. Now, both of these pilots were intended for the district to identify those people that they really like to support as they go through this opportunity to transition into teaching. So with that, this is important, because it is a source, a new source of individuals to fill those vacancies for the state. So these are our numbers, and I think the important column, when you read across, yes, I've issued the first column, those are all the ones we've issued to date, but these applications are in real flux, because I get them in every day, there's people meeting requirements, sending me their progress reports at all times, so I guess the important column would be that potential for this school year, so over 100 of the Limited Apprentice for Special Ed, that's 100 positions that people in programs that are available to be, for hire. You can see the elementary pilot, much lower numbers, and that was true for last year too, I think our final figures last year were about 100 of the high incidents and about 26 or so for the elementary. And then, again, reading across the currently valid, that's the current total, people on those licenses right now that are currently teaching, and you can see that we've graduated people out of that program, even though the plans of study, the program is over a two-year period, there were some that were accepted into the programs, some are doing a calendar year elementary program, were able to complete that, so we have had some that have moved on to their standard teaching license. The bottom row, it says TAP. I wanted to include these figures, because this is an innovating program that you as a board approved for Wichita State University. It's an integrated program for- It's an integrated program for elementary and early childhood, unified birth to grade three. And I think it provides an important, again, a source of opportunity for individuals to transition into teaching and to provide some teachers to fill some of those vacancies. Are there questions about either of these pilots? Okay, then, moving into the actual vacancies. Now, before we start and we give you the vacancy numbers, I want to point out a couple of things that we feel have had a fairly significant impact on the data collection process. So if you remember, we're in our, just our second year of taking a collection in the fall and then finding out in the spring what happened to those reported vacancies, where they filled, were there new vacancies? So we've greatly improved the way that we collect. A few years ago, it was just a simple one-page report that school districts submitted. And then we build it into an electronic system that was able to drill down more into the actual positions that were open. And then again, we keep improving it so that now we can take a look at not just what happened in the fall, because these are, as Shane will tell you, some dates. They're collected early in the school year. So what we really needed to do is look at the end of the school year. So as we built this new system, it also provided us an opportunity to improve our communication about reporting vacancies. So that occurred in several ways as we sent out announcements, provided instructions for using this new data collection system and so forth. Number one, it allowed us to tell everyone how important this data was. You know, you have to be accurate so we have accurate data because it's only as good as you report. Secondly, we were able to reinforce the definition of a vacancy so that school districts could take that definition and really understand what's considered a vacancy and what isn't. A good example of this is many school districts said, well, that wasn't really a vacancy because I put a long-term sub in there. But really, that is a vacancy because you couldn't find a teacher. You put someone with an emergency sub. So that was, and that's an important thing. And as we go through this, we'll point out specifically where we feel that that number impacted the number of vacancies. And then finally, we've been able to provide some individualized training to some of the larger school districts. So we reached out individually. We've talked to Salina. We also did a Zoom meeting for Western Kansas Liberal Dodge Garden City. And then Wichita, we meet with them every year. So we feel, again, those that proved data collection as a result, communicating about that, how to report, improved the communication and resulted in more accurate reporting. I'm going to turn it over to Shane.
So good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll move on to future reporting. So the information you're going to get today is basically raw data numbers of the number of vacancies. So at the end of the day, the so what to that. So as we get to go into the future reporting, we'd like to show vacancies as a percentage or a total of positions statewide. That way, you don't have just a raw data number set. You actually have something you can compare it to, and then you can kind of use that to judge the impact. So case in point, this will allow for more targeted analysis of data. So let's say you have a small school district that has one mathematics vacancy, and they're only authorized or only need one mathematics teacher. Obviously, that's going to be a critical shortage for that particular district. Whereas if you have a larger school district that has 35 mathematics positions and only two vacancies, though they have more vacancies, the impact is probably not going to be as impactful for that district. So this is going to give perspective to the vacancy data that we report. So some of our specific endorsement areas that reported numerous vacancies, well, it's a large number, but what is that? That impact may not be as great. So as we move forward, so that's something that we want to provide. Also, the inclusion of private school data. I am currently collecting some private school data, but in the future, if a private school desires to be accredited by KISA, then they will be required to submit the licensed personnel report and vacancy reports with their licensed personnel report. So these are a few things that we're looking to add. So I'll go ahead and tell you what is going to be covered as far as the vacancy collection. So it's going to include fall 2018 data that was collected on or around one September of 2018, spring vacancy data, which was submitted with the licensed personnel report on or around one March of 2019. And then our fall 2019 reporting period just closed on the 27th of September. And before we move into the actual vacancy data, you probably need a definition. So the first two bulleted, the first two numerated items are definitions of vacancies. So one not filled. Obviously, if you don't have an educator to fill a position, then that's going to be a vacancy. Moving down to the numeral item number two. One caveat on what Susan spoke about as far as more accurate reporting by the districts, better training, and actually giving them a clear concise definition of what a vacancy is. So this particular area is where we feel that we made great improvement on districts reporting accurate data, which has made our vacancies increase. So any vacancy that's filled with a substitute, or any position filled with a substitute will be considered a vacancy unless they're temporarily filling in for an individual that's, filling in for a contracted teacher on a short-term period. If it's a long-term sub, that would be a vacancy. Other situations, individuals that aren't properly licensed. So they don't hold the endorsement for their, either teaching, or they've never been licensed, or they have an expired license. Numeral item number three is not a vacancy. So individuals that are waivers, provisional licenses, restricted teaching licenses, and the two pilots that Susan mentioned, those are vacancies.
Okay, so what you're looking at are the figures for the top five vacancies. So remember that, top five only. The bottom row reading across is all reported vacancies. So if you add up the top five on fall of 2019, the furthest right column, that's a total of 459. So you can see that the top five make up 50%, just over 50% of the total number of all reported vacancies. Now, the yellow thing, the yellow rows, you can see that the top five from last year, if you look at fall of 2018 and fall of 2019, same content areas, right? You have special ed, elementary, English, language, arts, science, and math. But over the past few years, those have remained consistently the top five vacancies. But within that, English, language, arts, science, and math seem kind of flip-flop, and they trade placement within that top five. So when you're looking at English, language, arts, fall of 2018, 46, go down a row, and 53 for fall of 2019. A couple of things about the data. Elementary ed includes both self-contained and departmentalized elementary classrooms. The three content areas, that's totals for middle and secondary reported vacancies. The special education does not include early childhood, and Shane will address that in a minute. So you can see that we did have an increase in vacancies from last fall. Keep in mind, too, the importance of having that second collection because to really analyze what happened in the 2018-19, you have to look at both the fall and the spring collection. So we filled some of the vacancies in the fall last year, but we also had some new vacancies. So as Shane said, these are vacancies. They are what they are. It's raw data that was reported by the districts. Shane is going to talk about, and you were just provided a handout.
So on the handout that you just received, it has the, yes, ma'am?
Shane, if you can get closer to the microphone. This is being streamed throughout the world.
Awesome.
You don't want them to miss out.
Okay. Well, I'll try again.
No pressure.
No pressure. So the item that you have in front of you, that's the total listing of all vacancies reported from the fall of 2018, the spring 2019, and the fall of 2019. I'm not going to go through each item, but I would like to clarify a couple of things on the list. I'll start with early childhood. So the way that early childhood is collected, when the district selects it, they have the option to select either general, special education, or integrated. And the reason that we rolled this up into one entry for early childhood is because our early childhood unified endorsement. If an individual holds that, then they're endorsed properly to teach special education, general education, or the integrated population. So that's why it's all rolled up in there. Next, I'd like to move on down. There is a category for elementary sped. In the future, this will go away. All special education is supposed to be reported as educator type four. However, districts currently have the ability to departmentalize, and there's a other category, and the district selected other and entered in sped. So we're going to move away from that functionality. That way, they have to go to educator type four. In addition, a few other things to clean up the data. Some of our secondary reporting items, specifically dealing with our CTE, will be more combined, and this will be a little cleaned-up product. So pending your questions on this, I'll move on to the next slide. Right, so every time a district enters a vacancy, they have to enter a reason. So these are the seven categories that the districts have to choose whenever they're entering a vacancy. As you can tell, the first two in there, the first two at the top, no applicant and not fully qualified based on endorsement area, those are the largest areas, specifically not fully qualified. So common theme for this briefing is the total number of vacancies that they've increased, we believe, once again, it's related to that specific reporting by the district of those individuals not fully qualified. And you can kind of see that the numbers have increased dramatically. Now, as far as the remaining categories, we had a decline in every category except for personnel. Personnel, that could be captured as, I've had numerous districts call me. They hired someone at the beginning of the year, then that person left within like a week or two. So those types of losses would be listed here as well as inter-district movement. So someone gets a promotion or moves to a different position. So I'll switch back to you.
So we thought you would be interested in seeing the breakout of the top five. Remember, this isn't all vacancies. This is the top five only, how they fill out within your, in your board districts. So again, it is what it is. You can identify your board district and see which ones. This is pretty consistent with the way it was spread last year, too, using the top five only. Questions on this slide?
We've got some questions, but let's go ahead, and then we'll catch them all.
Okay, we're going to move away from the vacancy data into what the licensed personnel report. And for those new board members that aren't as familiar, this is where all of the districts are required to report the assignment information as well as demographic information of all of their licensed personnel. So they do salary, full-time equivalent. Besides assignment, I'm thinking of the demographic. Anyway, they're required to do that every spring. So looking at it, instead of throwing a bunch of numbers at you, we're showing you what logically can we look at this self-reported data and kind of make some conclusions? So you see, based on the entrance and exit code, so returning teachers, there's an entrance code of returning teacher. So we know which ones have returned, which ones were hired as new. So based on that entrance/exit data, we're pretty stable in that almost 90% of our educators, they're remaining teaching in Kansas in the same district. There is some intrastate movement, but when you look at stability and movement, you know, there's not hordes of educators at this point leaving. The new grads is interesting, and I want to make sure that you don't think of this as only 4% of new Kansas grads are being hired. This is saying that of our total workforce, that percentage is made up of people that just graduated from in-state or out-of-state teacher prep programs. So in reality, entrance code for new teachers from in-state college was 1,720. So if you look at the number of licenses we issued, that's more than the number of initial licenses we issued because you can't, there's influx, there's crossover. And it pretty much matches what Title II reporting data that the universities provide tell us for program completers. So the bottom line is if you're a Kansas grad and you are willing to go where the openings are, you should be able to find a job. We're pretty much hiring based on numbers, the same amount of people were graduating from our Kansas programs. We're still importing more than we're exiting to other states. That's that last figure. And from other fields, we're increasing slightly. And I think that might continue as we get into more and more pathways and credentialing and opportunity for those from industry and other businesses to come into the classroom.
So for this particular demographic slide, how you look at it, if a data field is not in parentheses, excuse me, if the data field is not in parentheses, then that's the current year. If it is in parentheses, that's last year's data. So the bottom line on this slide, there's three takeaways. One, we're getting younger and less experienced in our workforce. And the final listing would be that it appears that districts are reallocating funds from those entry first-year teachers and choosing to use those funds to pay for veteran teachers. Based on the average salary for the first-year teacher is dropped by about $500 as the average salary for teachers across the board has increased by 800, approximately $800.
A couple of other data related to retention, recruitment, vacancies, waivers. For those of board members unfamiliar with waivers, starting this time of year, you usually approve those on the consent agenda every year. Waivers are, it's a teacher who's decided to add a new licensure area, and if they have a plan of study and are currently enrolled, a district can request a waiver. Basically, you're saying we waive the requirement for them to have a license at this time because they're in a program. So last year, our numbers were pretty close to about 700. So over time, they keep increasing. The majority are for special ed, as always. And we're beginning to see an increase on extension on the number of days under an emergency sub-license. And again, that's that accuracy in reporting where we're saying you can request an extension on that limit of number of days for those emergency sub-people that you do place in the classroom waiting for the contracted teacher to come back. So again, that reflects accuracy in reporting. Restricted licenses, that's the Kansas Alternative Preparation Program for content areas where you have a degree in that subject area, and then you're allowed to start teaching while you pick up the professional ed. These figures are the number of new ones that we've issued in each of those school years. So there'll be actually more. That's usually a two-year program. So again, we'll issue that many in any one school year. You're always having some graduate off and some additions to that. So the actual number teaching in the school districts is higher than that number. I think this is an important one to reflect some of the work that you've done in the past related mostly for retention. So a couple of years ago, we looked at cohort who was in their third year of teaching in the 2008-9 school year. So we started with that cohort. So this is the third-year retention over time. Now, it's important to know, why did we start with that year in particular? That was the first year that mentoring was required to move from an initial to a professional license, the beginning of the 2008-9 school year. So you can see how our retention rate went up, and it continued to climb. Had a few peaks and valleys, but it continued to climb up to about 2013 and then started going down slightly. In 2015-16, we said, let's go ahead and make some guidelines and have the districts send in their mentor programs for approval based on those guidelines. And those guidelines, I think, were one of the first things that came out of the Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee. So then, we're tracking. So then, we're tracking when that was implemented and what happened. And then you can see that it continued to drop, it started leveling off. We saw the leveling off, and in 2017, it was recommended to the board, and you adopted this, that two years of mentoring and support for a novice teacher were important. And so that was implemented beginning July 1 of 2017. The program guidelines were also tweaked at that time. So right now, we're still leveling off, but what we hope to see is an increase again in the retention, or at least no dipping anymore. So mentoring, important, support of brand-new teachers. I think this illustrates that well. Okay, licensure, stable. I think the important thing here is, if you read across the out-of-state, we are seeing a drop in the number of out-of-state applicants. That makes sense, every state is experiencing some supply and demand issues, a shortage of teachers. Again, these are the licenses we issued, and you can't always align this with the number of program completers, because this is July 1 through June 30 of a school year. So we issue a lot of process, spring graduates, we process some of them before July 1, but a large number of them after July 1 also. So it is what it is, but you can see that it has dipped over the past few years. And then one good news, again, I think this reflects the importance of the pathways. The Career and Technical Education Specialized Certificate is finally showing a fairly significant growth. This was implemented in 2014, so for the first about four years, we'd only issued 49. And then, as of last year, we jumped up to 70. So we're seeing more of that type of credential. The Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee obviously continues to work about retention, recruitment, supply, and demand. One thing that I would encourage you to attend is the Third Annual Recruitment and Retention Summit, November 25 in Manhattan. And I think Randy is a keynote, along with a gentleman from K-State to present some Kansas-specific data. And then we have a speaker from Colorado to show how the state of Colorado has attacked recruitment as a workforce issue. So it's a very interesting perspective on it. Evaluations of those two pilots, you adopted those pilots for two years, so we've contracted an evaluation group to look at that pilot data. And I'm kind of excited about it, because they're not just going to say, oh yeah, this was good, this was bad. They're looking at which practices, such as what kind of support did these people need? Should the parameters be tweaked? What kind of coursework should we be delivering, instead of one that we took that was an already existing curriculum? Continuing conversations on sped, trying to get a science survey out and final recommendations around that. And then, of course, moving forward on the other recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Task Force. So that's the data we have, and open for questions.
Okay, well, we've got a number of questions. Thank you for your report and for the data, a lot of information. We'll start with Steve Roberts. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Susan Shane. I've been proffering a question, almost my little survey, for several months now, and I want to give it to you. And it's a choice, A or B. And before I do this, I want to apologize, because when people offer you an A or a B, sometimes it's neither A nor B, right? And the example I use to illustrate that is the question, is the United States a Christian country? Are we a Christian nation? Well, I don't think that's a yes or no question. I think you have to take it one step further. You might ask the question, if the founding fathers set this country up so that you had to be a Christian to be a full citizen? The answer is clearly no. I think everybody in this room would agree that that's no. But if your question is, are people in this country religious? Most people say yes. Are most of the people who are religious in this country, are they Christian? Yes. Well, then, in that sense, we are a Christian nation. So sometimes, it's not a yes or no. So with that caveat, I apologize, but I'd like you to answer yes or no, if it's possible. This would be a question to offer educators. Choice A, we're going to pay you 25 bucks an hour for all your contract time, every minute of your contract time in the classroom, you're going to get $25 an hour, and you're going to get really good job security, because you have this job, because you've got the credentials on the state mandated checklist. Choice B is, we're going to pay you $35 an hour, not just for your contract time in the classroom, but even when you're grading papers at home. If you're on the job, we're going to pay you 35 an hour. But you're going to be evaluated, and if you don't do a really good job, you might be replaced. What do you think most teachers would select, A or B?
Good question, because in my head, I'm thinking of all the data that shows salaries as the number-one reason for retention of teachers, but I would hope that they would pick B.
What's interesting, and so far, it's unscientific, maybe I'll have to make it scientific and publish it, but administrators tend to lend themselves to answering A. I think teachers want A. And teachers themselves, nah, they want B. I just offer that as food for thought. Thank you, Susan.
Jim McNeese.
Well, let's see, going back to the data we have up here, and going forward into an item we'll be approving here shortly, okay? We have seven pages of waivers, and they're all special ed. Okay, I mean, just seven pages. I didn't count the total number, but I figure there's probably got to be over 400 of those rascals. How many are there, do you know?
Well, you just have the very first batch every year. We process the first batch in September for the October meeting.
I was going there.
The two high, it'll be September and October that'll have the big numbers, and then they'll start to trickle off.
Yeah, exactly.
Last year, we're, yes, we...
But we don't, I just want to make clear, we don't consider those vacancies.
That's correct, because...
Yeah, because they're in a program, and they've been hired, and they're on a contract. But isn't it in reality, it tells us that there's a huge vacancy, that in some of your other numbers, people could look at the numbers, and you don't have to go back to them, but there's only 180, I think, you had vacancies in special education across the state.
Yes.
And in some way, Randy, we need to publicize more accurately the vacancies that we're dealing with in special education. Now, because you look at it and says, oh, it's only 180, that's not bad. Other states, it might not be using the same counting procedures, could show more or less. But I'm just saying, you know, thank you to the folks that chose to go on a waiver. So I don't mean to anyway, or demean them, you know, thank you. Because what they're doing is extra work. They're going to extra school, going to classes, you know. So I appreciate that. But I would like to see a report that came out and said, here's the vacancies we have, nobody found a job, but here's the ones that are in an alternative license. I think that would help us understand better the crisis we're in, in terms of special education, which also plays into not just the vacancy and supply, but to the requirements that we have under IDA. You know, that they have to be this or that, you know. There's a lot of, there is gifted in here, but gifted accounts for like, probably like, just a quick look, maybe only 2% or 3%, maybe not even that much. The rest of it's high incident, low incidence, special education. Just a request from a board member to get a more accurate view of the vacancies that we actually do have. Another point here was, how many of these folks who are in this program of waivers, and there's a limit on the number of years they can do this? It's four, is it not? You can go three, but ask for one more?
It's three, because the next step is moving to a provisional, and most sped programs, that's after the first generally methods characteristics, the practice comes, so three courses.
Yeah. But I'd like to maybe see some figures, the board is so inclined, of the number of completers who then stay in special education after they've done that. Just a thought. Thank you.
It's probably something you could come up with, couldn't you?
Well, I will talk to my special ed staff here in the agency, because they have their own data collection system, and may already have those figures.
Very good, that'd be great. Okay, Jim Porter.
Three points, one, B. Point one, Steve, I'd choose B. Point two, you've already answered the question I was going to ask, and I should have asked this question whenever you said you had questions about the pilot, so I apologize for that. You answered one of them, because I was going to ask if it expired, and you've already answered that. And the next thing I would, my only comment was, it appears to me that that's making a huge impact, and I would hope that we would seriously consider either extending or modifying that to where we can continue to meet the needs of school districts.
Lynn Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I hate to say you validated my sinking feeling going into today with that number of vacancies. I had a fear that it was going to go up, I didn't anticipate it going up that high. And you had that slide that said, initial teacher salaries actually decreased? Is that for this school year, or was it the last school year?
For this school year.
So it went down, even though...
Well, for the reported 2018, 2019 school year, compared to the 2017/18...
Okay, so that salary is last year, not this year.
Correct.
Thank you. I was about to go on my first soapbox, I think, in the seat, about that, because I know we beat the drum pretty heavily about raising teachers' salary and to see it go down. I was about ready to kind of blow a lid.
18/19.
No, I'm good. I'm good now. Now that I know that it's last year's data, I'm calm again. So anyway, that was, I saw that number go down, and I jumped out of my chair, but it was, it's last year's salaries, not this year's.
Correct.
Okay.
All the data is 18/19.
Oh, all the data is 18/19? Okay.
For the licensed personnel report data.
Okay, so the 8/15 is, so the 8/15 is this year's?
Yes.
Okay. But everything else is last year's? Okay. I appreciate that clarification, because I was thinking that was this year's data, and I was like, eh, thank you.
Thank you for your report. I would, I don't know if all board members, but I'd be interested in having a copy of the PowerPoint.
Sure.
So, because I know there's a lot of data in there, and I'd kind of, you know me, I'd kind of like to look at it. So, and I'm sure Teacher Vacancy and Supply will be probably going over this in a little more, a little bit more detail, so I look forward to that opportunity. So thank you. Thank you for your report, and thank you for your information. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we need to move on to consent. Huh? Okay, we're looking at the consent agenda, and remember, we have 12D we are postponing to next month, and 12G we have added, and you have a hard copy of that in your folder. That being said, Jim Porter has moved to approve consent. Second, Jim McNeese, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? 8-0-1. Okay, next agenda item is Don Gifford. There he is, there's the man, all right. Okay, so we are excited today, because here in a little bit, we're going to get to celebrate our 50th reunion, 50th reunion. We've got some folks here for a reunion.
We can call it a reunion.
We can call it a reunion, yeah.
Some of you may be in your 50th year.
Yeah, some of us are. But our 50th anniversary of the State Board of Education, and I think Don's going to give us a little bit of a history lesson today.
Yes, but a little bit of disclaimer.
Okay.
This was originally intended to be Mary Madden, somebody more attractive and eminently more qualified than I am, to give this presentation, right? But her husband had emergency surgery yesterday, and so I found out last Friday that this was my thing to do. So it's not going to be nearly as polished as what Mary would have provided for you.
We appreciate you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. So the Kansas Constitution established the State Board of Education, as well as the State Board of Regents, you guys officially in 1969. But before that, of course, we had education programs. Originally, it was territorial, so there actually was three members of the State Board in the Kansas territorial period, right? So while we were yet a territory. And then, once we became a state, we had superintendents of public instruction, 26 of them in the course of the time between statehood and 1969, right? And Lizzie Wooster was the first ever woman elected to statewide office in the state of Kansas. And it was superintendent of public...
Okay, we got to tell you, everybody's joking over here, saying Janet voted for her.
Oh.
That was Jim.
Janet knows her first name.
No, Janet, you did not vote for her, I'm pretty sure.
You don't think?
No, I don't think so. So the first schools in the state were, actually before the state, and they were mission schools, right? So the Potawatomi Mission School, which you can now see on the grounds of the Kansas State Historical Society, was the first mission school actually, actually in the state. And then missionaries, of course, taught a basic curriculum. So you guys already saw the little poster in the back, right? 1896, there were 9,284 school districts in the state of Kansas. And that's because we had a public land survey state, right? Which, when we surveyed the state, we drew the state into 36 square-mile sections, and each one of those sections, one of those sections was dedicated to public education. So every township could have a school. And so most of them did. And you guys have heard that story, right, of your parents walked both hills up way in the snow? I can verify that my mom did walk, because she lived on this hill, three-quarters of a mile away, the school was on this hill, and literally, she had to walk uphill both ways to school in the snow to get to school, because that's what it was. And so, anyway, this is, in Thomas County, this is a SOD schoolhouse back in the day, 1897. Teachers had to arrive at school between 7:30 and 8:00, and they had to spend the first... It wasn't about doing prep work, right, for their classes. They had to sweep out to school and clean the blackboards and make a fire, because that was necessary. The average salary in 1915 was about 70 bucks. So if you go to the Kansas State Historical Society today, they actually have a one-room schoolhouse out there. It's the Stack School from Delia, Kansas, and you see the pictures there. I collect old books. I'd say rare, but rare implies that they have value beyond, and they don't. But I have this one, Classics for the Kansas School, and this is the eighth-grade version, and it's missing the first 11 pages. But what's interesting is Laura Gardner had this book in Delia, Kansas. So she was in Stack School when she used this particular book on the classics of Kansas history, and that's in my book collection. So those were the courses that you normally would take, reading, language, arithmetic, spelling, penmanship, geography, physiology. Agriculture is big in the state, so kids all took ag classes. The classics, this book is the classics. It's got poetry, and stories, and all kinds of things. And then, obviously, history, and Kansas history and civics, so. Teachers had to have certificates, but school boards had a lot of independence about who they actually hired, right? So former Governor Mike Hayden's grandmother said she got hired because she could make a fire. And once she said she could make a fire, they hired her. I will tell you, my own personal experience is, my grandmother taught for three years in a one-room schoolhouse that she graduated from. She graduated, they turned around and hired her, because she was a late starter, she didn't graduate till she was 18 years old, from eighth grade. Remember, there were no high schools, right? Some schools, by 1915, 1920, they'd have a ninth grade, maybe, 10th grade, that was it, right? So they hired her right out of eighth grade to come back and teach in the one-room schoolhouse that she graduated from. So alternate teacher... So alternate teacher licensure.
I'm all for it.
Right? That's what she did. So this is Gerard High School, by the way. Rural schools generally were only fifth through eighth grade. Occasionally, in the cities, you got higher than that. School consolidation kind of brought that number from 9,200-some-odd down to, in 1969, when you guys started, to 349 school districts. So there were 349 in the state. State consolidation in '69, I remember, I was going to a consolidated school. So in '69, I was in ninth grade. So I was going to a school that had just recently unified. It had been Auburn High School, and it combined with Washburn High School to become Auburn/Washburn Unified School District in 1967. So anyway, so in the course of the last 50 years, this board has done all these things, right? You've gone through all of this pile of stuff, all these changes in education policy, all these different impediments and obstacles and all this stuff that have taken place over the last 50 years. And I couldn't actually put all the stuff up there, so there are a million other things that you guys have also done and had to deal with over the last few years.
Don, just make note that I did die of dysentery on the Oregon Trail.
Oh, yes.
Did you? The Oregon Trail.
I, I think I survived personally, but no one that went with me ever made it on the Oregon Trail. That Apple IIe, that was...
Apple IIIe.
Yep, that was it, sure. Okay, so I know I'm standing between you and a celebration, so as Marie Antoinette might have said, let them eat cake. Thank you very much. Congratulations on your 50th year.
Thank you, Don. We really appreciate you taking us through some of the monumental things, and love the book that you brought. That's great. That's wonderful. I'd also make note, some of our guests are starting to arrive, I'd also make note, we're going to take a little break here in a minute, and the actual festivities will start at 3:30. But while we're doing that, you might notice as you go around the room, there's some posters up, kind of starting over there, like in the 18, late 1800s, with some significant things that occurred as far as Kansas education were concerned. So take a little bit of an opportunity and tour around and look at some of those things. I looked at them this morning, they were kind of fun. Some folks in the department did that, so really kind of enjoyed that. And we will finish getting things set up, and we'll, so visit a little bit and take an opportunity, we'll actually get started at 3:30. So welcome, everybody that's here, and I know that we've got other folks showing up too. So thank you.